To the Carlisle Select Board Meeting on Tuesday, February 28. And I see we have quite a few people that are joining this virtually, which would be great. Welcome to all. And our select board are all here, are all here in person. We have some of the finance committee folks here that are going to join us. Shortly when we get to the budget part of our agenda. Let me quickly review. We have community input first, and for those of you that are virtual, if you would like to make a comment, you should raise your hand or indicate by using the hand signal in the chat that you want to say something. And then anybody who's moved to the chair again. And we'll have some appointments and sadly, a meeting coming up. And we'll get into the budget part of our agenda, which will be pretty substantial. We're going to hear about some town hall structural changes. We will be closing the town warrant tonight. We also are going to consider two ARPA committee recommendations. We'll have the TA town administrator's report, liaison reports, cemetery deed vote on, and then approving some minutes. So in the chat, let's begin. We have lots to do. And let me first go over and thank the Department of Public Works here in town for doing a great job. It's been a year or better. We can handle the last 24 hours. And I'm learning this technically. Is there anyone who is virtual that would like to make a comment? John Lavery, is that you? John Lavery? You're muted. Say something. We can't hear you. Still can't hear you. Can you hear me? Put your thumb up if you can hear me.
In body language, suggest a thing.
One second, one second. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Can you hear us? Can you hear me, John?
No.
No, you cannot. Well.
I can hear you. I can hear you guys fine. Can you hear me? I'll quit if I can't. You can't hear me.
No, John, we can hear you. You see, I have my thumb up?
Yes, I do.
So you must be able to hear us then, correct?
Yes, yes, I can.
Okay, great. Want to offer your comments, please?
I'll try to be quick. I got three comments. Number one. Why, 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 why is it?
John, would you introduce yourself and say your street, please?
Oh, John Lavery. I live on School Street. Right, right down by the school. Hi, David. So I have three comments. I'm shouting because I don't know if you guys can hear me. The first one, the first one is, why is the DPW plowing the congregational church parking lot? The Catholic school parking lot? Even the FRS parking lot? For free? Every year? Since I've been here, 20 years. The congregational church, if that was a commercial contract, that's like 20,000 bucks a year. The Catholic church, it's a big, St. Irene's is a bigger parking lot. Like 25,000 bucks a year. The FRS, that's more of a nuisance. But with the grass mowing, like 5,000 bucks a year. $50,000 a year. The 20 years I've lived here, a million dollars. Well, why are we doing that? What do we get for that? Y'all know about this. The only person I know on the select board that doesn't know about this for certain is Nathan. Nathan, so you get, you get a blank check on this one. But David, I told you about this. Kate Reed, you've known about this for years. And you were actually tasked by the MFC to rectify a part of it. You didn't do it.
John?
I'm not done.
No, well, John, I know you said you had two other points, so why didn't you make?
I do, but, but see, I'm asking a question.
Yeah, but John, remember, we're not going to deliver if you don't respond.
Actually, Barney, you are misreading the law. You don't have to respond. You don't have to, but you can. And, and let me finish. Don't interrupt me because as soon as you interrupt me, you're engaging in dialogue.
Well, that's why I'm asking you.
And then, and then the mask, the mask, the mask of is clear that they want you to engage. It's true. It's Matt, Ryan.
John, please give us your next two comments.
I will do. But again, so you, you Barney and Travis, also, and Ryan, you all know we're doing this and we're doing it for nothing. Million dollars over the 20 years I've been here. All those people that are angry about their taxes. They might have something to say here. All right, the second point is, last select board meeting, the PSBC offered this little tidbit that the previous plans for the renovation of the police station, the TBA plan, let's call it, was some sort of preliminary plan. I sent a couple of you guys in. No, it wasn't a preliminary plan. That was a fully developed schematic. Bid documents, construction documents, drawings, everything for the police station renovation. It was totally signed off on. The town paid $175,000 for that plan, not to mention untold hours of volunteer time. And you, the select board, you were misled by the PSBC last week. They told you that was a preliminary plan. That was not true. And they knew it was not true. And amongst your membership, Kate Reed, you knew that was not true. You actually voted for that plan. You helped send it to Tim to put out the bid. On the PSBC, Bill Rissow instrumental in developing that plan. The most, he paid the most personal attention to TBA and the police chief. Jerry Lerman voted for that plan and sent it to Tim. And then you guys just let that pass. And now you're talking about starting over? You're going to spend $20,000? That's what, that's what Christine asked you for? $20,000 to find out what's wrong with the police station? This is like the fifth time we've done this in the past 10 years. We have a complete set of construction documents. We have a complete set of bid documents. We have actually been working on this plan. We have spent something like $450,000 as a town developing this plan. And now you guys just going to wander off into the bushes and start with your new downtown campus? I call BS. The final thing, my final point is on the PSBC plans for the fire station. I have a couple of questions. They're really simple questions. Why does Carlisle have 150-foot ladder truck? That in the 12 years we've owned it has never once, as far as I know, been used to put out a fire in Carlisle? Not once. This is like a $750,000 piece of equipment. It takes up a whole bay in the fire station. The whole fire station program review centered around keeping this piece of equipment. Why do we need it? We never use it. Why do we have two antique fire trucks sitting outside? You guys are entertaining the idea that we're going to make a multimillion-dollar addition to the fire station to partially accommodate these two antique fire trucks. Why are you doing this? This is nuts. Nuts. What you need is a real program review of the fire station, not a wish list from Chief Soros, but actually what the town of Carlisle needs. Maybe we do need 150-foot ladder truck. But no one's defended that to the public. Maybe we do need two antique fire trucks. No one's defended that to the public. Part of the charter of the PSBC was to reach out to the public, to engage them. That never happened.
John, I appreciate.
Part of the PSBC mandate charter, let me finish, was to explore regionalization of, amongst other things, the fire station. That never happened. And you guys let them get away with it. And you're sitting there right now trying to cut me off, which is fine, even though it's against Massachusetts.gov law and intention. And you're hiding, hiding, and you're pretending you don't know. And you want to start over. You've wasted hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's public comment period, Barney. I'm not done.
I understand.
You've wasted hundreds of thousands of dollars, and you continue to waste them.
Beyond reasonable dialogue and.
Which, which part? Which part? How much money have you spent? How much money? How much money do you think you've spent?
And when you're just.
I'm not coming to call names. I'm saying you've wasted money.
But you can either end now or we can mute you.
Mute me, mute me because I'm not done. Mute me. Go ahead.
And it's signed up in John's comments. Thanks. And John, we do appreciate your input.
No, you don't.
Hard noting.
No, you don't. You don't appreciate it at all.
All right, let's move on to appointment. Well, sorry, there is even in the audience that wanted to make a comment. Yes, please. Would you come up to the microphone and introduce yourself, please? Thanks. Yeah, right. Say your name and address.
Jeremy Burley, BDH, RLE47 Park Park Road. This is about three minutes of time. This may come up during the morning section of the agenda, but I'd like to speak about the lighting system in Quarry Artory. Quarry Artory is really center of state for Carlisle's cultural, civic, and educational activities. The school, the town, the community, all benefiting from, from South Bay Quarry. Quarry's electrical system, the house and sage lighting systems, the fixtures and controls are panning. They're in need of an update. The current system poses reliability and safety concerns. It consumes a significant amount of electricity and it encourages maintenance costs and volunteer time to keep it very. Keeping the lights lit in Quarry has required a lot of ingenuity. We have volunteers that climb ladders multiple times a year to replace bulbs and color gels, as well as refocusing the big stacks because of a. Having only 20-foot ladders with oven mitts is a safety hazard. We take out the first three rows of seating to get the ladders up there. There's an aim. So replacing dozens of expensive light bulbs that cost about $15 to $20 each three times a year is unnecessary. New LED fixtures nearly eliminate the need for ladder pipes. No need for bolt changes, no gel lights, coloring those lights, changing out those gels because they're colored. And they'll stay in place, unlike the four-decade-year-old fixtures that are hanging above Quarry. Electricity going to the Quarry system is a blend of 12 households of electricity. Just one hour of the quarry lights being in use can consume the same amount of electricity as an average Massachusetts home consumes in about two days. That's not even considering the age backlog. LEDs are multi-sustainable. They'll cut power consumption by eight percent. We've been engaged with Steven and facilities, Jim O'Shea, and the school committee. We'll be discussing this again at the next school committee meeting as well. I bring it up here because Quarry serves all audiences here in Carlisle. We hold town meeting there. The rep department has activities there. We enjoy community choirs and community theater events there. We rent it out to those groups. And certainly, it's, you know, the school in terms of the platform, in terms of the place for the band, the choir, drama club, seventh grade play, and so much more. So the request for Quarry really is about community. It's about safety. It's about sustainability. It's about reducing maintenance costs and getting something dependable for the community that will last us decades into the future. So I just wanted to thank the committee, the select board, excuse me, for your time. And, you know, if you need something to do on Friday, the weekend, or Monday, we'll be installing about four SUVs worth of loner gearing in Quarry. If we get the seventh grade play coming up, so soon. You've been working really hard. It's going to be a fantastic show, and we've got some work to do. So thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Jeremy. Appreciate your involvement. All right, is there anyone else in the room that would like to offer input now? And anyone else on the board fully? All right, seeing none.
I could say more about the DPW if you want me to.
Let's move on to the appointments and resignations. So in our packet, we have motions. If one of the board members like to move the.
I moved and I'm going to appoint Sandy Mason of Templeton Mass Service, the new assistant town treasurer and tax collector effective March 6, 2023. You have a second? We can do this on a voice vote, so I think, I think we should have this.
Oh, here's something about her and that position. Sure, although we do have her information in the packet. Yes, please, Ryan, would you like to do a reading?
Sure. So this position was advertised when Tara accepted the position in handover. So Sandy, a client, she in full disclosure, worked with me in Hubbardson. She was the treasurer collector there prior to me arriving. Before that, she was the assistant treasurer collector in Holden and holds all the federal records search. So Aubrey, Aubrey, Kim, and Kelly interviewed candidates for this position, and we believe, given where the, where the department is and what we need in terms of knowledge stability and wanting to to move towards higher level financial operations, this would be a bit of a time to recommend same.
So this is filling up being.
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other, any questions from anyone? Comments?
So she worked for you how many years?
We worked together for four years.
I mean, you were the TA, right? She worked for you?
Yes.
And she's sitting in a downgraded position.
I would prefer her to speak on it, but she said where she's at in her career, she's a people or a little less responsibility and a little more work.
Okay. And obviously, you speak highly of the one captain. I mean, this is, you didn't speak about it. The farmer switched from under your tenure. I presume it was pretty good. Are you ready to bring it?
So I knew next to nothing about this finance before I did the job at Hubbardson. I knew I was a quick learner. Sandy was the one who got me to where I am, especially on the federal collector side, since she taught me how to evaluate her. And then I did, which was awkward, but we had a good working relationship. She's a very strong employee. She does what she's told. She offers recommendations when she needs, and I think she's a constant professional.
And she worked under whom? Under Kelly or under Kim?
Yeah.
And Kim made the hire, or you're making the? Who, who sort of drove the hiring evaluation of it?
You made the hire.
My, yeah, I know. That was the first we've heard of this. Who evaluated, made the evaluation?
So we had a committee of Kelly, Aubrey, and Kim who interviewed. And then we discussed the.
All right, everybody ready to vote on this? All right, let's do it. My votes. Please vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, this motion here unanimously halfway through the meeting.
Nathan, I don't think your mic is on.
I think just in the future, it'd always just be great to meet them when.
So my only comment to that, and it's rare that I would make such a comment, is I think it's inappropriate for assistant board positions to meet the entire board. I think it's intimidating and it's overkill for those positions, and I think we lose candidates because there's such a tedious application process to get to the assistant board position. I do, I do think it's appropriate for departments, and if you do want to bring every candidate here, if you happen to. But I do think that we are losing candidates at this. Not necessarily in front of this board yet, but other boards.
Yeah, I'm not aware of it, but it's just awkward to be appointing this, appointing somebody they didn't. And we can talk about.
I move to accept the recommendation of the interim chief of police, Kenneth Bong, to appoint Sean Brewer, Austin Hampshire, to serve as a full-time public safety dispatcher, subject to the satisfactory completion of a background check.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ryan, I don't know if you want to offer any comments about this position, which again is filling a vacant.
Sure, and since it's my fault, then the, the document may just read itself. So recognition, Chief Soros, old Chief Soros, Sandy Bong are the recommending or the appointment authority for a dispatch mission. So Mr. Brewer is a very experienced communications specialist and dispatcher. Having served in Chelmsford since 2011 with multiple positions before that time. So we are lucky to get a candidate of this quality who can start on day one and is, is ready to start. If you are ready to appoint, and Chief Soros is here, and Chief Bong is on a, on a call right now, otherwise he would be here in Port Paul. But Chief Soros is here to answer the question of the candidate.
You sort of, do you have any comment you'd like to make on this one?
No, I think we, we kind of referred to him. He's known, well-known to the people in our departments and well, very well respected. So I think we, we were very fortunate. Like I say, like we say, he's, he's already the firm on day one, which is unusual to be standing in this.
Good. Any other questions, comments?
You're making my life difficult. I'm adding coffee with the Chelmsford town manager after Thursday. What should I tell him?
Yeah, I mean, I I think we, it's, it's those sort of things like frog that we can impact on that.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Right, he's here. He's handling this. So I'm mad. I'm mad that I'm not making this night. David, yeah.
Okay. It is written, name and record. And I move to accept the resignation of Carlisle's innovative and very helpful director of council and aging and service, Joan Andersall, effective March 10, 2022.
You have a second? Travis, you still have a second, thank you. I'm sure there are a few comments you'd like to make. We, we have all this, so these are our first part of this. We can screen our calendar for next week on Thursday, March 9, for a farewell party for Joan Andersall, who will be here at town hall from one to three. I got that right? Yeah, so yeah, staff and various board members in the community are welcome to come. We are a celebration of all who brought to Carlisle, as well as wishing her good luck her position that she's moving to West. And I will just say on my own behalf that I think she's done an extraordinary job in the three years since she's been here. She came, got hired, I think maybe a month before we started. Everything shut down, went to pretty much, not even remote very much, but right, right before the pandemic. And she jumped right in as part of the LEPC group, you know, which is our emergency preparedness committee in town. And that's really how she met everybody, was via Zoom. But she has done an extraordinary job reorganizing here, council and aging, and done a terrific job with the board redoing job descriptions, getting the staff really well organized and motivated and, you know, done a terrific job with expanding the program. So we will miss her.
I, I would like to add that she not only reorganized the department, but then she also made sure that everything was documented, that there was a basic succession plan in place. She did cross-training so that she, I, I really am happy to see her go, but she is leaving it in good condition. And, you know, she would love to see. Yeah, we, we were, I loved seeing that and, you know, was hoping that that would be a good follow for, you know, other staff departments to follow in her footsteps, when that sort of thing.
Yeah, I think I might have said it to her even, and she definitely, in the Boy Scout tradition, left the campsite, went and then she found it. I, I got the chance, you know, to work with her as the liaison with this, and you all observed in her presentation to us. And again, today, we had an exit interview. Just incredibly well prepared, articulate, to the point, you know, not being, and then you made and, and very, very clear-headed about, you know, the direction that that board and that department should take. And with the output of the master plan found, I think, of a ready, I don't know, vehicle. I mean, we, we have here at the board emphasized to other boards that they should be mindful of the master plan and consistently, there's a strategic plan. But she didn't need that guidance. She was right on that already. The, the, as we well know, the, you know, the over 60 or whatever crowd is that have growing demographic counts fairly large, it's sort of underserved with regard to how much resources it gets compared with the, compared with children. And, and she's been a very strong input. You've built, you know, a great set of programs. We worked on this room, make it a better space for them, and we have a lot to do with those rooms which are inadequate in, in the future. But I think she definitely started the department on a good track. It's worth noting, I guess, that we asked her some things about, you know, what was good and bad, and we'll bring it all back right now. She'll submit a report to the board, but she likes a lot of things that we like about Carlisle, the sense of continuity and the evolving volunteers and so forth. Brian's not here, but she predicted to pull him out for his support in very concerned. But she clearly pointed out that, you know, we've under-resourced her, the department, the physical space, and so. So once again, I know we talked about it a lot weeks ago, I guess, a week ago. But it, it, it may not make the list right now as we look at public safety, but really we do need to be mindful of the need, the facility needs of serving that demographic and giving, you know, the seniors of extent of a place to go, a place to participate. That's more than just a moment. It's multiple different participants. So I'll miss her. She's a good friend. I thought she really grew a lot in the town. The good news, as people pointed out, is that, you know, she's got us up to a continued success. If we recruit the right type of person, we will do that. But once again, I have to say, you know, we, and coming at us and pretty much everybody in this room to bear in mind as we are underserving that demographic and we're going to have to think about that as we move forward on the next few years.
All right, well, we'll be part of the discussion. Ryan, what is the plan for an interim?
So we do have a very qualified, it's not necessarily a deputy, but Carol serving in the social services role, would, services coordinator role would be a good pick for while, while the while the search is going on. So we would be recommending that she serve as an interim while the appointment search is going on, if she was to be a candidate for the, for the chief position, which would go through the process of everybody else. But, but in the interim, we would bring that game to you at your next meeting. To tell me what we're thinking or recommendation would be for your appointment on the.
Thank you. All right, are there any other questions or comments?
I would follow up on that one, okay? So she's leaving on the 10th. I know it's small, but I'm tying up in that. That meeting, but it's Carol, Carol serves acting in your cognizance, just to make sure that there's no gap in leadership. Maybe we got people, I don't know, five days. I don't know. It's definitely Monday, Monday.
Per, similar purposes. I would assume we need, okay, okay, fair enough. Thank you.
All right, let's take a vote then. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
That means you're going to oppose.
Yes, yeah, well. All right, regretfully, we accept the resignation. All right. all right, regretfully, we accept the resignation. So, all right, um. I did that to the party. So let's move on and thank you FinCom for your kindness and the folks for your patience here. Um, why don't you, if you want to, we can arrange enough chairs for you all and join us up here at the table. There are two mics there, um, which are very often for and let me just, um, introduce, uh, again, what I I I mentioned, basically, and, um, like we're living about a time.
Hi, you guys.
Well, there is your open time. As well, and thank you all for being here. Um, before we do the formal, um, opening of your meeting, I do I do want if this select board, uh, will, um, is willing to state five minutes to speak if we are, uh, well, let me back up a page on our last meeting. We really discussed that meeting is the one before around our uh, budget for the FY twenty four and, uh, long term capital planning and the board articles, uh, one of the, uh, requests that we were not come to conclusion on in our last meeting was around, uh, the sustainability staff. And rather than, I know in the documents that we received in our packet, it's it's included in the operating budget for some of the income. But I don't want to, um, uh, overlook that we as select board didn't take, didn't conclude our discussion about it. And I'm wondering, having had two weeks, um, whether we are comfortable taking a position as or in that meeting, what we need to do is to go to on it. Give us another crack. And there's a group setting that
More than one person.
Then helping form the best of the set. Um, so I'll comment to you all about our project.
I I actually, I I would like to understand, you know, my my point in the last one was understanding kind of really where it came in and went through to the elected numbers.
Everything's going.
And I know that we have this and you have this, if I could like pop it through and what our bottom line number is and how we're funding. Um, if I had decided right now, um, without having that second, I'd vote voting against it.
Mm hmm.
Um, so I have a short range to have the three budgets are bottom line. That's that's why I wanted to do that last week. So putting it at the beginning, that's what I changed what I left last year.
Okay.
So that I would prefer late if you want to go ahead. That's fine.
Okay, um, comments from others? You're ready to go.
No, well, I'm ready to comment.
Okay, comments.
Yes, but I I think it's I understand, um, Nathan's position. I would say the reason why we're having this dialogue in advance of the joint session is it's very hard to we have to settle on some baseline model that we want to discuss. My opinion, and then see the impact. And then decide if that impact is sustainable, either in use of free cash or tax ring or some combination. If we conclude from that model, whichever, whatever's in or out, that it's too expensive, we have to decide what goes away. And I'd be fine to make that the first thing. We talk about going away, but I think we have to start. We have to decide before we engage FinCom, is it in the baseline or is it not? My view is we should put it in the base, but that's my personal view. For procedure, I just want it, I want maybe the other, but the understanding that we can remove it.
I I I think it is in the baseline and that is what we decided last time was to put it in the baseline and and see what happened. What Arnie was just asking them to do is vote in support or non in support of the position. And I think that's in the base. No, I don't think we did. I think what we did was we did what you were just suggesting we do, which is put it in and see what happens if we can pull it back out. It's not as hard as to pull it back out as we voted with single position. So I completely agree with what you just said.
I thought we I thought we had, I couldn't call you. I thought we had not concluded that it was in the base. Right here in the top line. Oh, yes. Wait a minute. I mean, I thought when we were meeting, I didn't think we had.
Okay, I guess then just, um, I want to be respectful though, um, particularly for you, Travis. I know you we were, you were saying you wanted to vote on continuing digital item. And we were discussing that it's going to be outside the baseline request. So let's just agree that when we get to this part of our conversation, we'll look at the impact, um, and then we can come back if we need to be discussing the items first. Is that okay? Yeah, of course. Okay. Are you good on that? Okay, all right. So, um, let's get right into it. Um, um, so first of all, I want to say that, um, I just want to acknowledge the work that you all have done, the work that the finance director and our town administrator have done. And it was really good discussions that we have had as a board. I think we've all acknowledged even the first time in our experience actually being on the select board that we've had is detailed and thorough. I said our conversations about, um, the town's budget. So just want to really congratulate all of us, right? And say that we've come a long way since we started this process in fall and and we're getting very close. So, um, I I think that's worth acknowledging and celebrating. So with that, um, I would like to turn it over to Oh, yeah, right. So you need to open your knee. Thank you. Sorry. Yes. Okay, we're gonna call the FinCom games order. We have a little call, please.
Patrick over here. Uh, somebody here.
Liang here.
Pinsky. Over here.
You're all there.
I also opened the ARPA committee meeting. Call the ARPA committee meetings order, um.
Hey, we here.
You're all there.
John Kaufman here.
All right, welcome, John.
Thank you.
All right, um,
I can hear Brian. Which means they Um, I'll 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 let them. I'm just trying to try this over.
Yeah, so that's what I'm running. Sorry to be annoying and running, but we're trying to work on the sound for people at home and get this started.
Okay, okay.
Scott, say something.
Something.
Do that again.
Something.
Should be going through because he's showing up.
I think this one is awesome.
Okay, and I do see the, um, folks that are vertical too. All right, good.
All right. So first of all, I just want to start this by saying that the the documents that I sent out are a attempt to try and capture the discussions that happened at the select board in Pincom and do not represent any final votes or any necessary positions. The point of the documents is to change in real time to reflect a hopefully consensus on this. So many competing, I'd like to see arranged this way or that way. So this is just trying to around all that into one document that we convert from. Uh, one of the more confusing items on here was under tax impact.
Sorry, let me move there.
Are you, uh, do you have the budget discussion page?
Yeah, this one is active impact. See, I also have it up on the screen. And online.
Uh, is it the tax year? That's one way. Is that any, oh, that's the third, the third page in the packet. So, right, guys.
Hello.
So that page thirteen is back there. It ends up here on the screen.
Okay, so the, um, the one, one confusing item that it doesn't quite match, I think, though, is the FinCom is discussing using additional ARPA as an offset. So I tried to reflect that in the document just to make it obvious to Alvis, but that can be taken out. So these numbers can be whatever you want them to be.
Wait, go go back for a second here. So where are tax impact summary page? What are you looking at? Are you looking at the whole thing? I spent hours with it.
The the highlighted number is, um, adding additional ARPA to the capital plan to make the numbers match. So if I took a hundred and twenty thousand out of that, it would match the
Wait, the the ATM budget requests? Is that what you're on?
No, tax impact summary.
That's what I'm on.
And, um, what line?
Capital plan.
Capital plan, second line down.
Oh, second, second line. Okay.
I'm saying the the green box where my
Yep.
I understand. It's been saying highlight.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, and that says now we're twenty, still says four twenty nine.
Challenges of getting everyone to see the document, you know, the same.
So there's a $10,000 difference between FinCom and Select Board. Is that what you're pointing to?
Kind of. We could get into the, we can get into the summary of each detail.
Saying something was confusing about this page. What's the broad comment?
Is that the FinCom has discussed using more ARPA than the select board. So that number is artificially lower.
Okay.
All right, creates more free cash. It's just a conversation.
Okay.
You can get to.
And it also it's actually more than 10,000 lower. It's actually 110,000 lower, which is why it's very confusing.
Okay.
What?
Well, I think you guys are making it way, way more complicated than
It's 10,000 bucks.
That that has to be, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's somebody else commenting. Oh, okay.
You gotta mute it now.
Yeah.
Use email.
So four twenty nine.
Yeah, I'm trying not to mute. Well, um, I think people should just be respectful and mute themselves. So the
Sorry.
The changes to this document that from the last discussion that you've had, there's two things that have come up. One is we have some old bills that we have to pay our town council for a total of thirty, for thirty four thousand. We're working on other ways to fund this, mostly revolving funds to get that number down a little bit, but it will not go below the 25,000 and we should plan for the full thirty four. So that will have to be included in the warrants. Well, it doesn't have to be, but then we would default on our bills. Um, the second thing is what was mentioned during community input. Um, the schools and our superintendent is on the line here as well, have put in a warrant request to, uh, to repair or replace the Cory auditorium lights, which would be a significant add to the capital plan or the warrant, however you want to look at it, uh, $200,000 or so ask that can be presented. Those are two additional items that are not in these documents. So the way the way I would like to help you structure this conversation, but please feel free to do it however you want, is discussion on the operating budget and the tax impact, what the bottom line number would do, how much free cash to use and how much expense reduction to include would kind of be one bucket. A second bucket would be what to approve or not, or total expenditures for capital and warrant articles. And the third is what to do with the resulting reserves. Um, after this conversation, some next steps could include a agreed upon budget, um, adding actual dollars like the wage increase impacts to the budget, creating a document for you to look at that matches your bottom line number. And then, um, preparing a nice and much prettier and easier to understand document for town meeting. Happy to go through any of the details.
I think that makes sense. Uh, anybody, um, want to comment on the his, Ryan's proposal about how we go through this? Does that seem reasonable?
So the
We start with the budget discussion of the operating budget?
The documents I have here for you are the summary compares positions as I understand them between the FinCom and the Select Board. This one talks about tax impact. This one talks about your reserve levels, and then we can also get into the expenses and how that, what it used to be just notes, change the line items that you've already seen, which I highlighted in yellow for transparency.
Yeah, so let me, so I think we should, um, start with the with the first page that says budget discussion and then has the operating budget.
Yep.
Uh, right, let's go with that, which
Discussion.
You see that? It's page eleven in the packet.
He's got it.
Yeah, versus Select Board.
Yeah, and current budget, FinCom, Select Board, and then the delta. And then, Ryan, is it possible to, yeah, expand that, um, so it's a little easier to see? Yeah.
It'd be great. See it all at once, but at least you can see it.
Right. Um, Lynn, does that seem reasonable way to go about this? Okay.
Yeah, much, I think, smoother conversation. Do you want to walk us through it?
Uh, sure. So the operating budget is the um, ads, right? These are the things that are outside the guidance. There was general agreement that the that the department request met your guidance, except for these requests in previous discussions. The, um, only thing outside this that you've already sort of talked about, that I think you've agreed on, is those low hanging fruit reductions that have been taken out to try and lower the bottom line of this budget. Can revisit any of those if you want, but those are generally agreed upon, like lowering your FinCom reserve, taking out vocational spending and taking out um, the actual assessment of the regional school. So nothing that impacts service levels.
None of these numbers changed from last time. The only difference is we have incomes.
For comparison, there's two, two lines.
We have not taken a formal position on any of this. So we've just had discussions. So
Okay.
You know, we sustainability position, it says FinCom fifty five thousand. I don't we didn't take a position on that.
We didn't formally take a position, but we did discuss each line item and we can expand a little bit if you want to get into the sustainability right now. Um, what we did
I think we were thinking it was more of a collaborative discussion, not
Right.
Yeah, and position versus the other. So that's
I think it sounds like you're where we're at because we didn't take a position on it either in certain respects, because we said we kind of like to put it in there and see what it does. And if it really, you know, makes everything wobbly, we'll take it back out. But for now, we would really like to see it in there if it can be in there. So I'm assuming that's more or less where you guys are. Exactly, yep.
And my my question was more though, whether or not these numbers have changed.
They've not.
Plus, okay. So, but if we go down to warrants, from what I was hearing, that that there is going to be like 235,000 more there.
There have been requests for that, yes.
Um, but before we get to that part, the revenue assumptions, then I'm just, so this is, were you all, um, were you recommending that we use 300,000 for from free cash? That that was something?
Yeah, that's what we again to the month.
Yeah.
That that use implies the ads, the additions are in there. So in other words, let me say it different. It, what you're kind of saying is in order to afford the extra things that some people would like, your recommendations, if we want those, we should be prepared to part with another hundred thousand of free cash.
Yeah, the the short answer is yes. The way we were looking at this was, this is a year where the, oh, in, I jumped in. I don't want to speak for everybody, but this was a year we were looking at, this was really setting a baseline, not only from, um, you know, wage, wage parity, but also, you know, we have a very robust free cash balance. And I'd like to say it's because we do such a great job and we say, and we're really good at how we manage our cash, but the reality is we've starved
Right.
how we have managed this town. And so we've looked at it as this was the year we really have to look at spending on whatever necessary capital is and then have that five year longer look so that we are not doing what I like to call the seat of the pants planning, which we tend to do every year. So this is the year where we have to step up. We're still gonna, even with that 300,000, that will still give us a very robust free cash. It's more than we'd normally do. And also, when we, um, we're talking about opera money, we felt like that this is also an opportunity to try and do a lot of catch up for things that we've really neglected. But I'd like to hear from everybody else in the community as well.
One of the other things around the 300,000 and this is something that I was advocating for is we knew coming into this year, we were going to have this allocation hit at the regional high school. So last year, um, I think we were conservative with the amount of free cash so that we could have additional free cash this year to help step into that. So it's roughly $600,000 per allocation hit that we're taking at the high school. So the the reasoning behind the 300 is we don't normally like to use free cash for the operating budget, but if we contributed 300,000 this year, we kind of step into that 600,000 increase over two years. It's not one big hit. And that's something you had talked about.
Yeah. It's kind of a, yeah, a ramp instead of a step. But just to be clear to the listening audience, the three that might be listening that care, but it's not 600. 600 is the total difference, but the delta by be by reason of assessment ratio shifts about two, two, three ninety?
Three sixty.
Three sixty. So you're addressing a great portion of that. If you want to just say, I mean, if I were FinCom, I would say you shouldn't use free cash for operating expenses, but in this rare, one time, kind of extraordinary, let's call it dislocation, the amount of free cash being used is roughly in line with this extraordinary the amount of free cash being used is roughly in line with this extraordinary event.
Yeah, except that that bump is here to stay for a while.
Right, which leads to sustainability, which we'll get to in.
Yeah, but it was just a, a smoothing effect that was in, started in the works last year.
But the delta won't be like that each year.
Correct.
Right. The total bill will be high.
And we, even with this, and I, I think based on the last spreadsheet, even with this free cash, we're still above our target, upper end of our target served, so we have a robust free cash balance, and so.
I just make sure that I understood what David was just saying. So what I thought it was, was that there was a bump of how much we needed to pay for CCHS, and then that was going to go down next year.
Delta will go down.
So the delta.
Increase, be smaller next year.
Okay, so that means the bump is here to stay, but next year our increase is going to be smaller of an increase.
The percentage.
Percentage increase, not that the amount's gonna go down, okay. I totally misunderstood that in our entire discussion two weeks ago, when we were saying, hey, if we do this now, it's gonna come down and we will have more, so.
Yeah, so basically, it's going up, it's staying up.
For the, you know, for the projection.
So you have to fund it in.
Projections, yeah.
You have to be prepared to fund it now.
Remember, it's going back to historical levels, it's, it's, you know, it's not at its historical high for, it's just, we were, we went way down.
And then there's another little bumplet in twenty-seven, right?
Which is a bump in the increase that we have to pay, not a bump that's gonna come back down again, but who knows when that would.
Right.
Gets back to, you know, husbanding free cash for lots of things and not getting used to using it. Even though it is a dislocation, it does, kind of where you're going is it creates a false sense that we can afford it.
I thought the spreadsheet we were looking at that showed the up and downs was saying that we were going to be paying less.
In actual dollars.
In actual dollars.
Yeah.
You've been in municipal finance long enough, it's a diode, right? You never pay less.
So shall we continue on looking at just, um, so the warrants? We've, we've just heard that there's an additional request for the Corey lighting, um, which is two hundred thousand, and it's um.
Well, actually.
I don't think that's, I don't think that number's been finalized, but I know it's a change, the upper end being.
Three fifty, I think.
Two, uh, two eighty, two eighty, for the complete project.
Okay.
Can, can I ask why it would go in a warrant as opposed to, say, a capital plan or an ARPA request?
I mean, it's a large, a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar project, we typically deal a separate warrant in terms of, opposed to a capital item. I don't know, I get a dump check for a buck eighty.
What, and I'm also wondering, why is this coming to us so late, or did you already know about this?
Nope, uh, I think Jim.
Jim, are you on the call, or?
Yes, I am here.
You wanna speak to the um, the Corey lighting?
Sure, so uh, as Jeremy spoke so eloquently earlier, um, Jeremy's attended a couple of our meetings, the school committee meetings this year, and he was at the meeting in um, February. Um, so in that February meeting, he again presented, and and we are in this situation where the Corey lighting has been an ongoing problem year after year, it, it has been on the capital project plan uh, for quite a few years also, I think initially it was earmarked FY twenty-two. Um, but because it is in that state of disrepair, and it's really kind of failing all the time, and Jeremy was here, we inquired about the possibility of presenting a warrant, and we were told that, you know, we could present him till February twenty-eighth, um, so we, we did present that. Um, we also had a plan to, we, Scott let us know that it was late, and we understand that it's late, and we understand all the dynamics that hasn't been planned for, so we were thinking we were gonna speak about it at the next school committee meeting on March eighth, and we were hoping for the opportunity to speak with the finance committee and the Select Board about that, to see if there is any support for one of the three versions that were presented in the warrant articles, um, and if it's not possible this year, definitely looking at it for next year, so we kind of jumped in late in the stream, not even midstream, but um it is, as Jeremy presented, is something that poses a problem, whether it's the drama club or right at this moment, the, the seventh grade play issue. So that's why it's late, and that's why it's not solved, and we were hoping to have some conversations with the finance committee and the Select Board before this.
But I, to the earlier question, I guess you could put it under capital items, you could put an ARPA request, I think it would be quite large for what remains in the ARPA balance, we'd have, we would, then we would move some stuff that we would do out of capital, out of ARPA, back into capital, so it becomes a bit of a shell game. But I don't know, it, it just seemed like it would fit best as a, a separate warrant article.
So I have a question, um, in the capital plan, this is at three seventy-five, is this just a recent um proposal that you guys got to bring it into two eighty, because I'm looking at the capital plan, and that might have just been an earmark number that got pushed out.
So, just for, for context, so this, this has been on the um, the capital plan for the school number of years, that number was a placeholder, I think it was an initial estimate probably by Jeremy, um, and it was originally slated for FY twenty-six, and I know the school is, as I've communicated, is, is reviewing its five-year capital plan and refining it, and, and we expect to have a better picture of the overall capital plan um, in the June timeframe, so this particular item, um, as, as Jeremy mentioned, Jeremy is a, a lighting expert, um, and has been working very closely with both the productions and the school, and, and he's worked with Barbizon, the lighting company, to get a specific estimate. Um, and that, the new number is the result of the, the bid that Jeremy got from the lighting company to actually do the project, and I think he got that what, end of January. Yeah, so that's.
Two eighty's a pretty solid number.
So that's a, it's a very solid number, um, based on an actual quote. And, um, and then I know Jeremy had met with the school committee in their most recent meeting, and I think that precipitated this discussion tonight.
Thanks.
Was that quoted, like, state government prices?
Why, why, yeah.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so it's, uh, it's in, it's in line with MHD's contract pricing, which is the higher education consortium that I've, so I think designed into law, which is given done under that price, they could, they could execute in my understanding, so, I, I I look at it, I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
So it, so it seems like we've got a couple of things going on here, one is, um, that we haven't, it sounds like FinCom hasn't had a discussion really about it, and nor have we.
Nor has the school commi, I mean, the.
Just gonna ask about the school committee, yeah.
Um, what Jim was talking about is, I believe at the last meeting, Jeremy, you presented this proposal, um, but the school committee hasn't had it on their agenda to deliberate, and the first opportunity to do that would be March eighth.
I see. So, well, one option for us would be to allow a placeholder, right, to, to go on the warrant, because we have to close it tonight, um, and then allow for the discussions to happen, um, as, as needed, and then, because we can always choose to take something off the warrant, um, the Select Board can. That's, that's one option, the other option is, uh, well, several options, we could also ask um, whether this, uh, bid, whether there's a way to separate it into phases, and not necessarily do one whole project at two hundred and eighty thousand in fiscal twenty-four. Um, and then, of course, another is, we just ask it to wait until fiscal twenty-five, maybe there's some things in between there, but uh, comments from either FinCom or Select Board members about what you think we should do to go forward?
I just have a question, uh, what, what are the characteristics of the project, I mean, what, what kind of project would you, uh, say this is, because I mean, there was a implication that there was a safety issue here? There are safety issue here that makes us a higher priority?
What's a Stacy issue?
Safety.
Safety, sorry. Yeah.
You wanna speak to that, Jeremy? I mean.
Um, so right now.
What, yeah, come on up to a mic, so, um, it can be recorded.
It's right here, if you wanna just speak into the mic.
And, when implied a safety issue, so.
Yeah, uh, so Jeremy Burley, um, forty-seven Hart Farm Road. Um, the safety issue today is that the, the maintenance of these items uh, requires volunteers to get on twenty-foot ladders, so we take out the first three rows of seats. Uh, we put somebody up on a twenty-foot ladder, um, David, uh, is part of the SLOQ team, the Ciloyard Light Opera Company, uh, he goes up with no shoes on, uh, and, and he changes lights, uh, and we're now changing light bulbs, and they cost about twenty bucks a piece. We, we have about a hundred light bulbs. Um, but yeah, we're changing them three times in an eleven-month period so far, the, the lights just continuously are going out, they shouldn't last for fifteen hundred hours. Just so everyone is clear, that we're talking, he's right now talking about the lights in Corey Auditorium above the seating, that is, at the, at the ceiling. The only way to access those lights is to put a ladder. That's correct. In the auditorium and have someone climb up, because there's no catwalk, there's no way to lower that. Correct. Um, and so that's, these are the lights that sit above the seats.
But only in the front?
Uh, so those are the ones over the audience, there are ones that are over the um, um, the auditorium, um, the, the stage.
Right, but, but if you're sitting in the back, there's lights, those lights don't go out?
Uh, they're, 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 if you're sitting under about the third row, uh, and if you look up, there are stage lights.
Stage lights, okay, yeah, right.
There's no other.
Those are the ones that go out.
In the audience, all the lights go out, uh, since we have to remove the seating and put somebody on a ladder, we change them all at once. We take some of the light bulbs that are still working, um, after David changed them last, which was in November, um, to now, about a third of them have already failed, they should have gone for fifteen hundred hours, they're going for ten, they're going for maybe a hundred hours, it's just the fixtures are forty years old. There's not a lot we can do. Um, so we do take those light bulbs, and then we use them above the stage, the stage does have the convenience of a lift system, so that we can bring the lights down and be working on the ground. In addition to that, David asked to touch very hot lights, uh, you know, so that, I mean, there's an oven mitt scenario there as well, plus, there's certainly, at this point, forty-year-old fixtures, they're a fire hazard.
So this project would replace all of the lights in Corey Auditorium, or just that front row?
There is unfortunately, infrastructure work that needs to happen as well, there is a dimming system that controls all of this, which is also failing in several ways.
That's in scope.
That is, that is part of the scope, so, uh, it would be replacing the dimmer system, it would be replacing, uh, or adding what are called smart breakers, um, because new technology, LEDs, they dim locally, um, and it would be replacing fixtures. So, um, and then, and then the professional services associated with that, but it is infrastructure work where pieces of equipment or, or panels that are on the wall would be removed, and, and new panels and, and new dimming systems would be put in place that are current and state of the art.
And is it just the electrical lighting system, or is it, since you're already there, are you doing, and, and the controls, are you also doing AV and?
That is not within scope, we, we have had some conversations of what would it take to look at something like sound, which is another need in the, in the theater. Um, but then the question turns into who maintains that, it's not something that we're bolting in as part of infrastructure. You have to maintain microphones, you have to maintain receivers and transmitters, and, and that seems like, uh, there, there's nobody that seems to, would, would own that per se. So we're continuing to look at leasing those.
Okay, so this is just electrical?
This is just the electrical work.
And the controls.
Correct.
If this didn't go on the warrant this year and say maybe it was put, um, on the warrant following year, uh, has has it been explored what the cost of a professional would be, um, to limit the liability, uh, that you're, that's getting brought right now?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's certainly possible to, to, to look at the costs that would be associated with that, but again, we're, we're changing light bulbs that should last for a thousand hours.
Sure.
Every ten.
Is there, is there any estimate that we've been explored for that yet?
Uh, we have not had that, that conversation at this point, uh, one of the issues too is, um, you know, we, we've had calls from the kids saying that the light board is smoking, um, we have gone in and we have, uh, um, you know, we've soldered it, uh, four times in the last twelve months as well, right, I mean, there's, and that controls this entire system. So, I mean, they're, they're, they're just, it, it, at the end of the day, it feels like a car that has a leaky gas tank, uh, that has a, uh, steering and, and braking system problem, that has a transmission problem that also is burning oil. And you start saying, well, we can put something on the gas tank that'll get us to the end of the street, will it stop, can we turn it? Not likely. Um, you know, so it's, it's requiring a lot of work on all the pieces, and unfortunately, the company that made this particular piece of infrastructure went out of business in the early two thousands, uh, there's not a lot we can do. So, and, and twenty years ago, uh, a volunteer in town, part of SLOQ, uh, an MIT graduate who lives up in New Hampshire, created a box that talks to this lighting system, we've actually gotten twenty extra years of life out of this particular system, because he has this box that will actually talk to it, we would have had no way to control it in the early two thousands if he hadn't built that for us.
So let me, um, you, you know, this is really interesting stuff that we need to understand more about, but I think tonight, we don't have the time to, you know, have the, um, full discussion about this, so um, I'm wondering, uh, if, if there's some general, uh, feeling that we should, uh, the Select Board should go ahead and allow for a placeholder tonight, uh, that goes on to the warrant, and then we, um, the FinCom would have a full discussion of it, and the, the school committee, obviously, and if, uh, if the school committee did not want to recommend it for this year, great, I, I mean, not great, but it would come off the warrant, or for some reason or rather, in our discussions, we thought it didn't make sense, we could remove it. Do we want to, uh, consider doing that? The alternative, as I said, is, um, we could say, no, we're gonna postpone till, or put it on for FY twenty-five.
So Bernie.
Yes, Nathan.
So I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, that, where, where we started this was kind of focusing on some of those infrastructure things that have been ignored for a long time. You know, it might mean we have to take another look at some of these, but I don't think we should say, don't look at it.
Okay. That's a, um, encouragement to do a, allow for a placeholder warrant item.
And the question is raised, why now? Why not last year or the year before? Why? And I think it's simply because we have the, the efforts of Jeremy to actually push this project forward, I think one of the challenges of the auditorium is its specialized equipment. It really hasn't had an owner, and over the last, what, four or five years, Jeremy's basically been the lighting guy for all the productions, and he's been bringing his own equipment, and he's probably more familiar with the system than anyone has ever been, and he also has the expertise to make the recommendations, so he's been pushing this project. Um, and I think the question of why now is simply, there was no one there to do this before, and so, um, you know, I think from that standpoint, it's one of those things that you could push off a year or two years, it's gonna have to be addressed in the next few years, um, there's just too many safety risks, there's you know, there's just a lot, and I've, I've, I've worked on the, the seventh grade productions on the sound side, and I've seen the lighting system, and it's kind of terrifying, um, and if you're at town meeting and you ask the people in the third row to look up, they might wanna leave the third row, because but I think it's, it's an important project, if not this year, it's, it's something that's gonna have to be done in the next three to four years.
Yeah, and it will be more expensive.
Right. Yeah, and, uh, you know, I, I kind of push the thing of, of safety, because you see the ladder, and it's in the presentation, and people go up, if someone falls off that ladder, the cost of the town would be incredible. Um, especially when you can look back to how it's been maintained, and it's, and then you have students working on it, they lower the light for the production, and there's just a lot going on there, and the electrical issues, some of the old equipment has some, some questionable materials in them, um, there's a lot of moving parts that you don't wanna leave for too long.
Yeah.
And we've been fortunate to this point.
So it, yeah, it seems like, you know, we've gotta consider it, we should consider it, I'm back to what we talked about earlier, which is, it's hard, I mean, the chance of SchoolCom saying no to it is essentially zero, so I don't think we need to worry about that gate. Let's think about us guys, let's think about, is it ARPA or is it free cash? I'd like to understand that, since ARPA's meeting, you know, because your model of free cash and mine is a little different, I, I, I want a glide path to the twelve percent free cash floor at the end of twenty-seven, because I know we have another bump, so I'm trying to, I, in my model, I'm, I'm sort of being very careful with the free cash, on the other hand, ARPA's got a clock to it, and you, and I think Kate have advocated, spend down what's here, because it's not getting old, better with age.
And we met, we met yesterday the ARPA committee and had a high-level discussion about the use of ARPA funds in fiscal twenty-four and for capital items. We have about seven hundred and thirty thousand remaining to commit to ARPA funds. What we had originally talked about prior to the, um, existence of this warrant was, we wanna keep some in reserve for.
Was we want to keep some in reserve for. Unexpected opportunities that might relate to some of the things we've done to this point, like helping the heating assistance or. Vaccination clinics. We want to keep some funds down allocated so we can respond to. A good opportunities for those funds. And. Doesn't have to be certainly not the majority of funds, but you know, if we were going to apply. Two hundred to three hundred thousand in ARPA funds in fiscal twenty four, the same amount in fiscal twenty five, and then you could still have some funds to do that. That would be one approach. If you said. Well, we want to do this warrant and use ARPA funds, you'd essentially probably take your fiscal twenty five ARPA funds and put it into this.
Well, let's let me take the first part of it, which is, it sounds like we're in agree, well, I'm not hearing anything, anyone saying, speaking against having this be considered. Right? So. Travis and Kate, you're comfortable with us?
Yeah.
Trying to put it up for consideration by putting, giving a placeholder to it.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Ultimately, having the town. And town meeting have a say in this would be helpful.
Okay, so we're agreed on that and then.
So what is it?
If we're agreeing to go ARPA, it doesn't have to go as a warrant.
No, it doesn't unless unless we were gonna.
Yeah, because I'm not, I'm not sure we want to throw things on the warrant that we're not. Going to then want to move because that can always create.
Right, well, I think that we want, I think we want to have a real serious discussion about how this would be funded. It goes on the warrant, how it would be funded and if it. And you know, if it doesn't go on the warrant, if it will be funded, you know, that that kind of.
So you want to do that now, you're saying?
Yeah, I because I don't want to put things on the warrant that we don't move.
Then I have a question about more procedurally about this whole discussion. I mean, this just kind of for us came up, you know, recently and and it may be very valid and and. You know, it's compelling in many ways, but. You know, we've got a lot of things that we talked about already that we've kind of already knocked off and I don't, I don't know if there's going to be an advocate for each of those tonight who can. Speak to those and I just want to make sure the process is fair to everybody who's applying for. Projects, you know, within every department, I mean. Yeah, so I think just. You know. One bit of clarification is we're not. We're not voting on the budget tonight. At least I sure hope we're not expected to vote on the budget tonight. So there there. We still need to work all of this out. We're just kind of. Talking about what might go in and then seeing what the bottom line is, right? So I think what we need to do is we need to get that two hundred and eighty thousand. In here and then see what that does, but we have to figure out how would it go in there.
That's right.
So I think I'm completely. I I'm not answering the question is the process, but I'm agreeing with you that we we need to know how it's going to impact everything and not just throw it in. Because there may be things like I immediately looked. And you know, I'm the liaison to the the D P W, so. They'll be mad at me for this, but let's talk a little bit more like how many miles is on that dump truck? I mean, you know, it's kind of like, you know, we're going to have to take a look. At what we might be able to negotiate. In order to make this happen, but a question I have is ARPA, all or nothing? No, we, so we could pay part of something with ARPA and then find other sources. So maybe this is something where we could find. We could pay out of multiple areas like reductions in expenses and.
So depending on. Where we net out on capital items. You could take, we could see where we are with the free cash and you could say, well, we're comfortable contributing. Hundred and seventy five thousand in free cash. If this were to pass. And then the balance, we say we could use seventy five in ARPA or some, you could do that. You could do a combination of that. We we can't do that right now because we're still. Looking at the whole pie, but you you could use a combination of funds.
Yeah.
Or as Scott said, a hybrid approach, meaning you accelerate. Look at this as an acceleration, right? And chew a little more into your habit. So that means twenty five comes down.
Yeah.
Am I correct that you're. Advocating ARPA funds for the elevator project, the CPS elevator?
We, I mean, we've, we've talked about that at the high level. I think where where we've looked at capital items and the use of ARPA funds and we've discussed as a committee is that. We would prefer to use the ARPA funds for projects that. Are necessary. They're not, these aren't discretionary projects. They are, they fit well within the timeline of the ARPA. So the elevator, both at the school and at town hall next year. All seem like. Good fits for ARPA in terms of the amounts. It's not discretionary. You're not bypassing a, you know, you don't necessarily. You know, if it goes to town meeting, it gives the public an opportunity to weigh in on in these items, something like the elevator, which we just have to do. I feel comfortable using ARPA funds for projects like that. So those are, those are some items we discussed, but again, it's, those have just been. Conceptual discussions. I think what we want to do is really finalize. What the capital items are we want, and then we can look at which ARPA funds can be used. You know, they should fit well within the procurement requirements of ARPA, which I think the elevators do. So that's why we talked about that as well as some some other items.
I actually think that. This lighting thing would also fit well in the procurement timeframe.
Well, it's, and it is what, eight to twelve? There he is, yeah, the. It's a, it's a, it would be done over the summer if it was approved.
Right, so.
This summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got a hard quote. It's, you know. M H E C contract pricing. If we were to say yes to something, they would have a document. I think that takes six to eight weeks. And then they quoted eight to twelve weeks to get it, so. Having the kids out of school, the students out of school and doing it during the summer seems like a good time.
So I think what I'm saying and I'm kind of echoing what Scott just said. If the project were to be really a health, safety and welfare project. That needs to be, if this, this, these two bodies decide that this is health, safety and welfare, it's a project that needs to be done and done soon, it should definitely go then to ARPA. Because that fits all the criteria.
Yeah, it's just a large.
It's large.
It would consume a large amount of the remaining.
Any ARPA can consider it and recommend partial funding, but I think that means that that would have to be. On the warrant. In order then to fix the funding.
Yeah, there's.
We have to be on the warrant.
If you're working to fund it solely through ARPA.
Yeah, we'd put a placeholder for a certain amount based on whatever ARPA wasn't.
On the other hand, I want to remind the select board. That the select board are the managers of the ARPA fund.
Right.
And if you were to decide tonight or tomorrow night or right after that, that. No, yeah, yes, it's health, safety and welfare. It it fits in the criteria of the ARPA fund and we think it's a better deal to just pay for it out of ARPA. That that. Should go, you know.
Direction come can come from us.
That direction can come from.
Yeah.
You.
Yeah.
I mean, it's wearing my. Spending about a shy at a half a million dollars of ARPA funds.
Seven hundred and thirty thousand. What's already in here.
I'm looking at one eighty five that's on this spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Yeah. Depending on the list, if, yeah, if you funded. Well, more than half of what's. And that, there's, there's nothing. Wrong with doing that.
Right.
And in fact. I think most towns and. Cities have. Spent all their ARPA funds as soon as they got it. And we've been trying to kind of. Not load up heavy and 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 be able to retain funds to to do other opportunities. My only preference would be that. We we keep some ARPA funds in reserve so that we can do. The the non-traditional things we've done. Helping out, like whether it be the stop the bleed training or doing some of the rental assistance, some. I would want to keep some in reserve to be able to respond to specific opportunities. But in the scheme of thing, that's probably. Hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars if you looked at how much we put into those as a projects to date.
Right, and if we, so if we were to add the two. Eighty to this one eighty figure. We would end up with three, and it was all, you know, ARPA, we'd end up with three seventy.
It's in the one eighty, the elevator. Or the elevator.
Various ARPA.
Yeah, okay. So you start with seven thirty, you have one eighty, that leaves you.
And if you add two eighties.
Five fifty.
You're missing a hundred thousand, yeah, I'm missing a hundred thousand.
I am? One eighty, one hundred and eighty thousand plus two eighty.
No, no, let's go the other way. You start with seven thirty unallocated, right, Scott? You take one eighty out that you already.
We'll be talking about the phone system later tonight.
Well, let's talk about all of it then.
So that's sixty seven.
All right, so five fifty, then it subtracts sixty seven. So you get to four ninety three or something like that. And then, or four eighty three, I guess, right, four eighty three. Now, if you take the two eighty out. You're left with two hundred, two oh three. If you're going to do the second elevator. That's another one forty, right? That leaves you sixty K pocket money. That's not enough for you, right, in your opinion?
I don't know.
I like. I don't know if it's enough or not because we haven't had those requests come in. But you don't all, you also don't have to do it all tomorrow. Right, like. You could say, we're going to fund the elevator, but when does the elevator need to be funded? Tomorrow or September or? January, you don't need to approve those. As you know, with ARPA, you can approve it very quickly and the funds are immediately available.
You don't need, but you don't need a warrant article. You, if you decide you're going to do that, you just do it. You don't run the risk of the town telling you, don't do it.
Right.
So. That's why still, I think my methodology is still valid. You got to decide. Which things you want to put your.
Yeah.
And we didn't, and that doesn't include the. Thirty K or the fifty K we.
You're just going to raise that this.
You're out of money, sorry Scott.
Yeah, fire department.
My money.
Police department, yeah. Yeah.
Blackboard's money. Well, it's all our money. You decide ultimately how to spend it. I mean, we, we recommend, but.
Right.
It's ultimately the select board. And I think you have to be. It warrants additional thought, and so I guess the question is. What what course of, it sounds like we need to keep a door open on this particular project. What's the best way to do that? Is it to just put a placeholder in? And then work through all these various questions, allow the school committee to discuss, put a number to this thing. And then we can explore these options. That's, I guess that's the question tonight is.
Or or, I mean, the thing is.
Or you don't put it on the warrant.
You don't put it on a warrant and then it really end. That you're going to put it, do it in twenty twenty five and then if for some reason you have to do it sooner, you can fall back on ARPA. Into it that way. ARPA can be kind of a. An emergency, a nice backup.
It seems to me like the the timing of town meeting still works with. The the quote that we got. And so, I mean. Not trying to hide things, but. ARPA is a really great way of being able to get some things done.
Yes.
So I, what I'd like us to discuss is a hybrid model of of funding for it. It seems to me like, you know, there's, there has to be a way where where we can find other funds. And you leverage ARPA funds, you know, to to pay for some of it, but not use ARPA for all of it because it. It, we lose a lot of flexibility in doing that.
Yep. I mean. But that would, that would be an argument for. Putting a placeholder in the warrant.
Yep.
We don't know the number, we can figure all this out. We we can refine the capital request list for fiscal twenty four, which will impact how much ARPA funds we want to use for fiscal twenty four items.
I don't think it will be controversial. We'll just say, look up.
Yeah, and then everyone will. Run out of the third row. Well, no, and I think also, I think would be helpful. Jeremy, if, you know, I was thinking if. We could set up a tour. For the select board, FinCom, school committee, whomever, to show you the lighting system. Because I think when you see it.
But you won't get the special. Door opening and you have, you have two parents, you know. Fan the doors so that the water, the air gets in, you know, so. I think.
Keeps things from.
We'll do it, we'll do it during the play.
Um, so.
So I think there's a lot of.
Interest in in moving us forward.
There's a lot of questions to be answered, but I I think if if you find it within yourself to to keep a placeholder, it gives us some time. To answer some of those questions.
All right, the people on the, the others of us on the select board, you comfortable with that? Yeah, okay, so we're agreeing to.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we're agreeing to then put a placeholder on that we will include when we come at the item further down on the agenda to closing the town warrant, okay?
Yeah, we agree to that, right.
Yeah, okay.
Try to wrap this.
Then, then we. Want to go through the process with the school committee, FinCom, select board. About further vetting this and we really need to do that by the end of March, right? If that's really our deadline. So the other thing, though, I'd just like to put out there for Jim and anyone else that's on the school committee. Is to. Have you? Since it's come up so late, have you looked at your other requests? That you've got in your budget? And thought about whether. You can. Whether you could change any of those, either lower them or move them into fiscal year twenty five. Right, where are you on that? And I I don't want an answer tonight, Jim, but it would be great if you would be willing to. Work with the school committee to explore that at the next meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we've discussed that, but absolutely going to explore it again next week.
Okay.
I think that fits well into what I was saying is we're going to perhaps have to cut other things.
Right, yeah, right.
Or and it simply may be time shifting, right? Like if you don't, we're saying this is the top priority for fiscal twenty four. Can we move something to fiscal twenty five that doesn't have?
The safety, the urgency. Right. Right, okay. Then I think we should move through. The other, let's see, were there other issues under the? Well. Do we? I mean, one difference under the capital was us, we were saying we thought we could make do with one cruiser, you have two in here. That's the only other significant, and I guess I know that's small.
There's a few other things.
Under capital?
Yeah, we we thought that the CPS should use operating expenses.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, that's.
And we also thought they should get the D P W to allow their parking lot.
Right, so.
Maybe before the church.
Yeah, Jim, if you, since since you're on still, you should note that the CPS walkway lighting and the server room, air conditioning. That were in your operating, that that should go into your, the school's operating budget. Now, I don't know if FinCom, if you've had more conversations or Scott, whether you think that's doable, but that's, that was our sense of it when we looked at it. Two weeks ago. And then the other item was a request for a CPS plow. Which, given our Department of Public Works. And their. Equipment. We would. Like to see the D P W doing that plowing instead of the purchasing another snow plow that's specifically designated for the school plowing.
Yeah, and so we we did that without actually talking to D P W. So. Or or the other thing we said was time shifted, you know. Deal with it for another year.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I ask one question, Bernie?
Of course.
Just so, just looking at the the spreadsheet here, it says F Y twenty three, so that. I think I heard reference previously that. If we had. If we had funds available at the end of this year, then those funds should be allocated towards those items, is that?
Correct. No, it's for twenty three. This year's budget if they have remaining money. Right?
Very good, yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so that would be another thing to take a look at and get back to us on after you've, you and the school committee have had the chance to look at it. And similarly with.
Sorry, there were a lot of people talking there.
Okay.
The CPS elevator and the the walkway lighting, we were saying, see if you can pay for it out of this year's budget with anything. The lighting in the server room, we're saying, pay for it out of this year's budget if you have any excess.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
You know, those two ten thousand dollar items.
And we've, we've talked about using ARPA funds for the elevator and the wastewater treatment plant HVAC.
And we did with two.
We thought, we agreed with that, yeah.
And the, and the ARPA committee, we discussed it at a high level.
In your one eighty.
That is. Yeah.
Right.
That's the one eighty.
Okay. And then the.
So do you know if there, you really don't know yet if they have the funds available for the walkway and the server room, the twenty grand? Do we, do we know that?
No, that would be up to.
No.
Jim and the school committee.
Okay.
Jim, do you think that's possible to? Give an answer back to us once you and the school committee have had a chance to discuss it?
On on the the two items that we're looking at funding, if there's surplus at the end of the year?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I I think everyone would support that. It's just the question is, will there be a surplus at the end of this year? We've had a couple of unforeseen expenses, but. I think, yeah, we'll talk to the school committee and I would believe there would be an agreement that would make sense.
Okay, good. All right, so we'll, yeah, we'll wait for a reply back from. From you all, once you've had a chance to discuss that. Thanks. All right, so.
Going back to the cruiser, I I mean, we we. I don't think we would be averse. Going back to the cruiser, I, I mean, we, we, I don't think we would be averse to going down to one cruiser.
What we discuss is that it seems to be, it comes up that every third year they ask for two, but I'm. We don't know where we even are with staffing at this point. So we thought maybe it's time to just have one this year and make.
You're going to have a new chief.
We're going to have a new chief and. Right. Yeah.
Right. Does anybody on the finance committee have any issues or opposed to reducing or comments?
Yeah. The only, the only comment I would make for that is that ultimately just pushing expenses out, right? The, the way these things rotate is they, they, they essentially go through a certain amount of mileage every year and you have to replace them. So you, this is the material thing. And I think, you know, when we have our FinCom discussions, I'd like to get into more of a discussion in terms of, looking a little bit longer term than just this year and we're pushing things down because that's typically what we do. Um, but certainly if, if need be, you can move, move it, realizing it, maybe next year, if it's a two-year, uh, uh, one, you're going to end up having to do a two. And if you keep pushing it, then some years you're going to have to do three. Uh, but in any case, that's my only comment around that.
We, we don't have a sense of the life right now of what they have in their fleets.
Oh, they do. I mean, there, there's a schedule for them in terms of roughly the number of miles. And we can, it's been circulated before and all you have to do is add the number of miles that they put on these things every year. Um, so same thing, you know, with a lot of things that we have to look at it from the standpoint of that this is not just, we look at as capital, right? But the reality is this is the expense of doing business because this stuff is, it wear, wear and tear and it goes down eventually. You have to replace it. Um, so I think we have to have that kind of hybrid lens, uh, with, with these, uh, like police cruisers or expendables over a period of time.
I think one of the things that we're missing in this year's budget process is it's been a great budgets process, but one of the things we're missing in this year's budget processes. In previous years, departments have met with you and, and discussed and we, and, and they would show all these schedules and everything. And then they would come and they would do the same for us. And that would be before we were deciding what's in without. So we're kind of running a little blind here and cutting a police cruiser because we really don't know what the impact is. Um, because I don't know if you all have seen those schedules yet, it were, you know?
We did have department head meetings. Every department met with the FinCom.
Yeah.
Didn't go in, I don't recall going into that level of detail, but it's a question that we probably should ask. I mean.
Yeah. We can, I can pull up an old one and maybe go back over with, um, Chief Fong if he hasn't had an updated one and we could just update one I have from last year.
This has been tremendously helpful and Gary did it with the trucks and.
Yep. The same thing, same thing with the trucks. I mean, my comment's not about, um, police cruisers, about how we think through these things as a, as a select board and finance committee. I mean, I think the other thing I kind of throw out here is I'm kind of listening to the risk of these lights is, you know, what other risks do we have in the town? Right? We know that from the standpoint of, um, even the buildings and, you know, DPW, their risks that we've carried. Um, so when we bring up something like lights at the, at the school as risk, we probably should, you know, take all of them back out and say, well, we've kind of put these off, bring them all back out and say, well, risk across all of these things, which one is the ones that we need to really think through? Uh, so that's my other comment is, is FinCom, you know, reconvenes is, uh, when we consider these things, um, yes, there's, it's old. Yes, it's risk, but there's a lot of things that are old and there's a lot of risk in the town that we've been kind of trying to manage. And what is the most risk that we have? And we have to make sure that we kind of prioritize that way. I'm not saying one way, I don't have a, uh, decision one way or the other. I, I'm just highlighting a process that we probably should go through.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no question.
But how did they get on this list in the first place? Doesn't it vetted? There was some vetting that got them onto this.
What?
The capital that's on this list.
That's what they requested. I don't know how we didn't.
So there was no, you don't, you guys don't have a capital committee anymore, right? It's all one committee, right?
It's not a recommendation for FinCom. That's just.
That's where they started was they haven't, they haven't deliberated this yet. So we're all doing this together.
We've had a high level.
Together.
Liberation, but.
But when the police came, when they did their budget presentation to you, there wasn't a specific discussion about the two police cruisers.
I think there was a discussion about it, but there wasn't. Uh, and they, they talked about how many miles. I don't know that we got into. How many vehicles do you have? Is that the right number of vehicles? Are you, how much are you actually driving? So I think there was like layers of detail we didn't get into. But they did provide, uh, transparency into, I think it was at 60,000 miles. They, they tried to replace.
They put in the replacement.
This is their standard schedule that they had on. And last year they said next year it'll be two. I mean, it's.
Right. But let me ask just one different follow-up question is, do, and maybe it's a question for Ryan. Do the departments have the guidance to consider safety as a priority when they make those requests? I mean, I'm kind of building on Victor's comment. It's scary to think we have a list that doesn't consider. I get it. The school may be okay. They're late to the party, but every department should be putting forward, first of all, risk reduction things, right?
I, I would believe that that was a part of what facilities was, was doing on capital things.
So I've been.
Safety.
Trying to articulate through this process that there, there, there needs to be a more cohesive capital plan. I think there are individual capital plans and school has one, there's one for vehicles. But when you put it all holistically, what you're really talking about is comparing things. So each department does need these things and they are safety priorities for each department. It's whether or not you prioritize.
That's right.
Right. But within a department, within schools.
There's more.
It's the safety. I mean.
There's more to fund at the schools than we can afford in the next three years.
Right.
So we're prioritizing what they're priorit, this is my opinion now. They're prioritizing what they think you'll pass at this point.
As opposed to what are the most urgent, uh, from a safety and risk standpoint?
It's all, I mean, it's all risk management. It's, it's what.
Yeah.
What the town is willing to fund.
Yeah. So we're asking, at least on the school side, we're asking the school to go back and, uh, take a look at.
If there is a larger list, we should see the larger list.
Yeah.
That should be highest priority on the capital budget.
Right. Exactly.
Right. Yeah.
I mean, it, and that should be.
So.
Right. Everything's risk, but a risk of too many repairs on a cruiser is not the same risk.
Right.
Certainly falling off a ladder.
Right.
Right.
I think with the school, I think it's, it was a function of Jeremy shining a light on the system that was the school committee to go like, oh boy. I mean, I, because it was in their capital plan, but even it was up until very recently, it was fiscal 26.
Yeah.
And then they're going to refine it. And then I think.
Came back to Philly for the seventh grade school last March and the system needed to be resurrected.
Ah.
It was completely down.
Yeah.
Uh, and there were a lot of things that we did to get it working at all.
Yeah.
So I don't think there's, I don't think there's, the school, with regard to the school, they're taking a close look at their five-year capital plan. And I believe that they'll prioritize anything that's a safety risk. And I think that's probably what's happening here is it's a combination of what's going on right now with that. And so how that's being done in other departments? I, I know the MFC is looking at risk, infrastructure risk in terms of prioritizing roofs and things. Um, I know that, you know, I can't speak to the specific other departments, but I would hope that.
I, I can speak to the, so the DPW, the bucket truck is so that the, the employees can safely cut, cut tree limbs. So right now they're doing it the way that they, the way that they can. It's, it's not the safest possible way. If you ask me what the biggest risk is in the DPW would be cutting tree limbs, but there, there's a general consensus that the bucket truck's not going to pass because it's been requested for.
Well, because they've been, they've said they've been leasing one and that's a valid option. So.
That's what we've currently been seeing on the streets.
So it's a.
Yeah.
But there is a.
Prioritizing the dump truck because that does the roads and keeps everybody in town safe. And there's only so much, so much funding. So the, each department would come up, if you said, give us everything you need, it would be overwhelming. So they're giving you what, what they need and what they think you'll pass.
Yeah. I think just what we're missing is we haven't heard it. Right. I think, um, you know, I forgot what I was going to say. No, I was going to talk about the lighting though. It's, you know, when we're talking about the lighting, I think that the, and I don't want to drive it into the ground, but we're not only just talking about the safety of the lighting, right? There's also the educational value and are we teaching the history of lighting or are we teaching lighting? Um, and what we have there is nothing like anybody would see if they went somewhere else or if they went to, you know, high school or they went to college and they were doing the same thing. Um, it's just not going to be the same thing.
One, one of my concerns is that, and I articulated this multiple times, is that we don't want to put in this, a great new system and then have it languish or rely on, uh, someone like Jeremy to, to, there should be curriculum around it. We, we do these plays every year, like, so I'd like to see the school, if, if the, if the town ends up investing in this, there should be an educational component that doesn't exist today. Around.
Completely agree with you.
Lighting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we know that Concord has programs that feed into the, the high school theater and we've had, as Jeremy said, kids come back from doing the seventh grade play and are running the seventh grade play lights now. I'd like to see a formal like curriculum around lighting and theater. We don't just want to put equipment in and have it languish.
Right.
Until the next Jeremy comes along in 150 years. And, uh, so it's a big, it's part of a bigger conversation.
Yeah.
Theater over at Concord, it's guys under Carlisle knows what's coming out of Concord from, you know, these kids have some technical skill. Get involved over there. He has no idea what's going on.
Okay. Jim, I'm sure you're noting this, right? For further discussion with the school committee.
And there's other.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Another, like the, the Sloc will be using these lights. So part of the question is like, from a funding standpoint, you know, I don't think we necessarily, it's a longer term question, but you know, I mean, do we, I don't know how that works when other parties use our lights or use our auditorium. I know there's rental fees. Like how do we, uh, if we're putting in this new system, investing in our theater, how do we recoup some of that?
Right. Right. Good questions. Uh, listen, in the interest of trying to move us a little further along, we're already, we've used up the allotted time for the budget, but I think we should continue and try to get through, at least the next part where we talk about the, um, uh, I, I think we need to, um, discuss, um, sort of the, the choices about, um, expenses and funding and use of free cash unless. Tax and. People feel like we should be doing something else. It feels like that's the, the place to focus our time right now. Does that make sense? Been come to. All right. So, um, Ryan, are is what our, what our, um, key talking points are or decisions?
Yes. Um, I, I didn't follow where you want me to go though. You're talking.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, we're, we're going.
Shut off and on for some reason.
Oh, okay. Um, is to, yeah, figure out, look at the questions of free cash and revenue and tax rate. Let's dive into the, what's the impact of paying for this? Um, how we would do it and, and what's the impact on the tax rate? The tax bill.
But to plow through this sheet now, we have to have some operating assumptions. So I'm going to assume that, oops, there it goes away now. I'm going to assume that the capital plan includes duh, duh, let me say it different. If we go for auditorium lighting, ARPA will pick up some piece and some piece will be cuts on other capital items for the purpose of this. Otherwise we have to redo the whole sheet.
Let me do this.
Okay. So we have to understand that. Also, what, uh, Ryan, where does the 35K of overdue bills show up? That's got to show up somewhere too.
That would be in, under warrant articles. So I can add that if you want me to.
Yes.
I, it's a question. Why does it have to be a warrant article? Why? Cause you have some other overdue bills, don't you? That or not?
It's also a warrant. So we'd add it to that warrant.
So on that question, I noted in your, somebody's notes, nine tenths vote?
Yes.
So what happens if they voted down? We don't pay the bill?
Yes.
Why is it nine tenths vote?
Use ARPA funds. It's.
Oh God.
Because it's, it's municipally bad. So they're punishing you. This is the best way I can describe it. You need to call it out.
Yeah. Okay.
Before we get to that, that, I'm sorry, before we get to the, um, spreadsheet that I think is tax impact summary. Is that, that's what I'm seeing here? Which one were you suggesting we go through, Bernie?
Uh, same one.
Okay.
Yeah.
If we just jump quickly down to or up to the.
The tax impact page?
No, the proposed expenses. Is that, is that showing that our operating expense is actually going up by five and a quarter percent? Okay.
Um, there is a caveat to that, that the building department and the transfer station were added to the operating budget and removed from the revolving funds. So that's approximately 180,000. So you would, the, the actual percentage is closer to four and a quarter.
Okay. So there's, that's not all an increase in cost.
You'd, you'd see the offset in the local receipts line that it went up from one, 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 nine, one to one, three, nine, eight. So that's where it's come, that's where it's offset.
Yeah. On the tax impact summary page.
Right. But we will see that every single year?
You did.
You know.
You did.
It'll be in the operate, but the offset.
Yes.
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 We'll see that every single year.
So you were getting that. The building department permits were going into a revolving fund and the building department was able to spend out of the revolving fund. So they were accumulating money in that, being able to spend it. And he, he did it fiscally responsibly. I just want to make that clear.
Yes.
It didn't have to go to town or vote. They could just use that revolving fund, which is why we always recommend that you have less revolving funds. It's less transparent.
Okay. So is there a way we could, I don't know, capture that somehow when we're looking at the budgeting that the baseline is actually going to be a lower percentage than they, what we're seeing here? Because there, there's kind of known income.
You can put in the letter or you can make a sub-line there, break it out.
Yeah. Cause I mean, if somebody were to see this, it's kind of, it's a scary increase, but it's actually not that much.
It is that much, but it's got some big things in it, like the CCRSD.
Yep.
And a bunch of ads. We just talked about.
It's four percent versus five and a quarter.
Right. But if we, if we, if people are used to seeing, or they like to see a two and a half, which is what, you know, we've sort of conditioned people are three percent. Yes, there's that adjustment, but there's also those other adjustments. There's the huge CCRSD assessment, eight forty-four, eight point four percent. And there's all these ads we talked about, the COLA and the wage plan and stuff that we are adding in.
Yeah. I, I totally get that. That the, the, the budget is very high, but it's also artificially high because of the structural change that we made.
Right.
So if there's a way we could pull it back out to make this look like, you know, this not look like to actually be the.
You don't want to make a caveat. You don't want to pull it back out.
Yeah.
Because that's the whole point, right? Nathan is you want to start honing down these revolving funds. I mean, right now I don't even know how many we have. We have quite a few.
Just in the presentation.
Right. No, I, I totally get, I, I totally agree with the thing. Yeah.
Down. I mean, there's a way to separate it out to say, this is really what the increase is. The total increase is this because this percentage has to do with us putting those components into the office. Because this is the.
Yeah. It's only a one year.
Right.
Um, you, you just have to explain it for this year and the next year you won't.
Show the increase in the local receipts line and then that, you know, you know, out with it. That, that's really, if you pulled it out either way, it would come out of, you know, if you were to break it out, you'd pull it out of the ATM budget request and you'd pull it out of local receipts. So anything you're adding, you're offsetting. So that's usually how you explain it at town meeting.
Is there any way in future years that that whole thing would kind of get lost, right? And that, that money would be spent on other things and we've just added it into the operating budget?
So I would say, and that's a great question. I mean, that it's the opposite. It has been hidden. So this is unhiding it. Um, what's estimated in here is the permit costs. So the sticker fund is estimated, it's five-year average of 60,000, which you could increase. You know, the sticker fund, if, I don't think that's something I should have said, but you could increase the sticker fund if you wanted to increase that revenue plus building permits are variable depending on, on the build. So you are increasing the operating budget with the hope that your revenue stays the same, but that's true of all revenue generating departments. What was happening was you were accruing money in your, in some of your, um, expense accounts. And then artificially constricting the operating budget because that money wasn't available in your, in your receipts. So the departments aren't, aren't necessarily happy about this, but the town benefits as a whole, because you can make these general decisions rather than specific ones.
Okay. All right. So sorry to derail it. Just as we're talking about this, in my mind, I'm thinking four and a quarter, not five and a quarter.
Well, it's 4.7. I just did the math.
Oh, 4.7. Okay.
It, it gives you better flexibility with your, with your revenue, as, as Ryan said, because rather than having it in the revolving fund earmarked that it can really only be spent by building, if your fees increase and you have a surplus, um, then it can be spent, you know, it, it helps all departments because the difference then would close out to, you know, free cash. Your, your funds are available for everybody's use. Cause the difference then would close out to, you know, free cash. Your, your funds are available for everybody's use instead of strictly for this department. And it also works the same for a department that is like, you know, with the sticker, if it's, if it's not meeting its needs and it's something you have to, you know, you want to fund and do, then you're not running deficit within that, um, fund.
So the T, the TSAC had the opposite problem. So they were running out of money based off the cash flow of the year. And then the true operating costs of the transfer station was, was not captured because you would transfer money in the end of the year to cover over the sticker fund.
Okay.
It's better transparency.
But even with all that, I think you had indicated a, a, a target for the tax increase to the residents. And I think that's back on a different side. I don't want to get us off track, but I, yeah, by, by using free cash, by using one-time funds, we could meet that objective. Um, I think when you look at the operating budget, the things that are driving the increase, the high school wage, the proposed wage increase, a larger COLA than normal, um, I mean, it's kind of things you have to do for a variety of reasons. Um, but we can strategically use our cash and our one-time funds to offset those, particularly the one-time things. And I think next year, you know, you're going to have challenges, but like we do every year. But we'll also be with this plan, we'd still have a very strong cash position where we could still contribute free cash. And hopefully in the meantime, we're also, by the way, trying to catch up on deferred maintenance. So at some level, it is what it is, and we can just be smart about how we use these funds and how we allocate these funds across different years. And I think for fiscal twenty four, we can certainly do that.
All right. So let's, let's focus on that for a minute then. I, I'm looking at the, um, do the tax impact summary. So we're looking at, um,
Line thirty eight.
I know there's some, there's some, there, the money, the changes we've made. Uh, let's see, the big difference here is in the, the revenue, um, right? You've put in three hundred thousand in free cash and we had two hundred thousand, um.
But I want to, I want to clarify something.
Yeah.
We're really not far apart because it shows three eleven, but we actually late in the game said, no, we want a three percent cap. So I think we're basically lined up. If you say broadly, we would like to keep the, again, it's an average, right? Tax increase that the average homeowner, which means nobody, but some mythical average house, not a deck house perhaps, I don't know, would, would, just saying, would, um, experience no more than three percent.
Right.
And within that plus or minus free cash to make that work. I don't think we're far off. I am a little concerned that this is already out of date because of the things we talked about tonight. And I guess the phone system, well, if you're operating it, it doesn't matter, but, but I think we're within range. If we're philosophically aligned, we'll make the numbers work.
Yeah, I think the question is, I mean, putting the two eighty aside, again, there's a hybrid approach to that, right? You can use some ARPA money and there could be some potential cuts, i.e. the cruiser depending on, yeah. Well, there, there is things we can do, right? The question is, how married are you to the free cash? I mean, we, again, we felt like we made that decision only because so this is the baseline year to start to right the ship and move in a more smooth direction versus this, this choppiness that we've been managing right along. So that's really, I think we're the, we're the biggest probably decision point.
I'm, I'm very comfortable with the three hundred thousand versus the two hundred thousand. I mean, that's still, you don't want to spend money for the sake of spending it, but I think.
We're at fourteen, we have fourteen percent with that three hundred.
Yeah, which is well above our, yeah.
Are there things that we, you know, just for, I, I guess just for a way of looking at it as it's not operating expenses? Are there things that we could spend that money on that are in the budget that really are one-time things so that we're not kind of creating more of a problem in future years?
For example?
Well, what we had talked about, and this was our whole entire discussion, um, which is why, you know, I, I'm so surprised about the whole, you know, the, the, the payment for the school. What we had talked about was, well, what we're going to use the free cash for is to offset some of the spike in the school, but it's actually not a spike in the school. That money's going to stay up there. And so that whole entire argument that we spent like a half an hour on two weeks ago is out the window for.
Well, it's, no, let, let me try to clarify a little bit. We're going to come up with a tax increase. I'm advocating, well, the select board seemed to call us around no more than three percent. You guys, two point seven six, but I think we're going to end up at three percent, right? One way or another, because there's things to throw in. So whatever, I would say, from my view, whatever free cash it takes to make that happen will be a three percent. So now the first thing is the whole levy goes up by three percent. So it's bigger by three percent. Furthermore, even though we try to, we make conservative assumptions about local receipts and state aid, which the governor, guess what? Came up with a kind of generous, you'd think, first year package.
Oh, no.
You don't think?
So I told you I was very conservative and she hit my number exactly.
She did? I didn't know that. Okay. All right. Well, that's out the window. But the, but, but the fact is we, we are a free cash machine. Okay, we are. And Ryan uses four hundred thousand a year in free cash. So in my model, we generate another four hundred thousand every year. So you get a higher base and more free cash. So I think it's not quite the same, like we're using up the free cash and then we're hooked on it in the operating. The whole thing goes up by some amount. It's the delta that becomes important. And that's why the CCRSD adjustment and the one-time wage and scale adjustment, those things are kind of one time, even though they do increase the base. If we want to look at it a different way, then I would suggest the following that it's, as you pointed out, Lynn, it's not, it's not to me that we overtaxed, we underspent, but what did we underspend on? We mostly underspent on capital. And we're mostly talking about using free cash to help our capital deficit and we will continue in coming years. So if we think philosophically, not about those operational dislocations, but that we're pumping more free cash into the capital plan over time, I think that would meet your metric.
I think that's what I was looking for.
Right.
If, if, if it's capital we're spending.
Right.
Okay. That's, that's kind of a, that's kind of a one-time thing. And I, I would feel totally comfortable with that.
But there's the other piece. I just, I'm so want to dominate, but just, we are over our twelve percent, which itself is very conservative, right? So we're at fourteen or something like that. So again, in my model, if we glide path to the twelve and we say, we want to be at twelve by fiscal twenty seven, and we have these other things and we have this, finally, we're looking at a multi-year capital plan. I'm also comfortable in that two to three hundred range, knowing that we're not going to do that next year. We're going to push all that extra free cash to capital. And maybe in twenty seven, we have to put another bunch towards, but to not be addicted to free cash as a operating expense bandaid.
Right.
So I just want to be clear for Nathan, because it's a question, this, this would not do what you're asking. So this is inflating the overall budget by the free cash number. You, you, you could cut more out of the budget. And if you cut capital items, they would just never come back. You're going to have to fund them again next year, whether it's in the capital plan or go back to increase the budget. So it, it's not, it's not quite accomplishing. What it's doing is if you have more, this much tax money every year to spend, what you're doing this year is you're spending all of it plus, you're hoping next year that your expenses don't hit that, that level again and, and smooth back down. But that's not a given.
Okay.
It's a risk.
I think I dominated this meeting.
Yeah, other, other comments from either FinCom or, well, I guess maybe the select board about the difference in the free cash.
I, I just look at it like, kind of like we did with the debt payments for the high school where you wanted to flatten the, the ramp. And we have with the high school this year, where our allocation is jumping up. So we're going from here to here, which is back to historical levels, but you apply free cash in one year and we say we're going to do it. We're very transparent about it so that it, it's not a spike, it's a ramp. We're transparent about where we're going to be next year. But that's not a real cost increase. It's a, it's a step change. And so that's, that's why I was recommending using, uh, three hundred thousand, which is roughly half of the the increase this year and being transparent about it. And it's a way to give some of our excess reserve back to the taxpayer um, in a year where everyone's dealing with inflationary pressures.
I, I, I agree with all of that. But the only, my only, you know, last question is there, um, you know, free cash, if we don't spend it this year, we'll have it for the next fifteen years if we don't spend it. ARPA money, if we don't spend it in the next two years disappears. Should we be spending, you know, concentrating more on spending our ARPA money? Just putting that out there.
But can't we do both as far as?
Can, but I mean.
We're going to spend, because you heard, there's more stuff out there than we can possibly, you know, than we have money. So we just have to get on. And that's what Ryan has done with their house doctors, trying, you know, speed that process up from the facilities committee and then other places. So.
Yeah, but we've been, we've been talking about not spending. We have, as a committee, the ARPA committee at one point said, we really don't think ARPA should be spent for operating expenses. But in this case, with, for instance, somebody like, um, Nathan's qualms about spending the free cash for operating budget, maybe we should change that um, focus and spend the ARPA money on the operating budget.
I still think, I, I still, I still think that the flexibility we have and being able to spend the ARPA money at any time has massive value.
Okay, I, I agree with all that. I just wanted to, as I said, throw it out there, because I, I think if you don't look at all sides of every question, you haven't done your job.
Any other comments from board members? Are we comfortable then with the, um, three hundred thousand dollars for free?
I, I mean, I, could I, like to, before we break up, let's make sure we agree on these different points. So given this budget, which has in its sustainability coordinator, which you didn't call us around, and doesn't have the elevator, I mean, the lighting and the extra bill and blah, blah, blah. I would say we should cap the tax increase to three percent and apply free cash as necessary to make that happen. I would not say apply three hundred K.
I would, I would agree with you. I think we need them to.
We got so many moving parts, we have to.
Proper plan is, but I know that we want it to be a plan.
Right. Or you want to say not more than three hundred K then to make it happen?
I would say we cap at three percent and we should work to balance what we're going to pay for. And yeah, okay. And no more than three hundred K.
So to what you were saying, Kate, is we've got to kind of relook at this, factor in these other things, get a little more information from the capital perspective and then see where we land. And is that number go up? Do we tap into more ARPA funds? Or can we stay at that number that we're at?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a few moving plant, moving parts in the capital component that we've got to figure out.
And then the final loose end, to go back to Nathan, is if at the end of all that is the, what is it? Forty, what's the sustainability position? Sixty K.
Honestly, it can be whatever you want it to be. Sixty five is just a placeholder.
But the question is, does it, if that were the final thing, and understanding that that's an operating commitment, so you don't necessarily want to use free cash as a sustainment. It's been floated at one time and I think not supported to use ARPA to ease into the position, blah, blah, blah. So I don't know if we take a vote of, I don't know what to do with that piece. I guess we just leave it in and take a look at it.
Well, it's all three of these big items under the operating budget. It's this sustainability position, the wage adjustments and the COLA.
But we supported those other.
I think we've all supported the drive, the COHS ten thousand dollar since ten seven for a driver. So, um,
I guess I feel like there's enough information for you to take another hack at it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'd kind of like to see it.
Where we are right now. And then, and then we get back together again when we have refreshed brains.
Yeah.
And, uh, and, and, and see, okay, where are we? And then we're going to have to figure out, okay, do we have to take anything else or are we good?
So you'd want to.
So I would say.
Everything and then our recommended budget? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. I'm thinking, yeah, I, I would say a, a recommended budget. Um, you guys play with the line items. Uh, we've, we've given you guidance at this point, I would say, rather solid guidance. We would like to have all these, all these line items in there. Um, but you know, you can play with them. Maybe, maybe it's, and I, I, I mean, I really don't want to even say this, but maybe slightly less for that sustainability thing, but maybe it's slightly less for somewhere else, you know? Or, um, or maybe you're able to make it work and stay within the guidance of, uh, the tax percentage being. And more, yeah, maybe you are with what's, what's in this operating budget.
Knowing where you all stand is incredibly important because we want, we want us all to be unanimously.
Supportive.
When, when is the ARPA, when are you guys convening next?
We can need a dime. I mean, probably we met yesterday, we can meet Monday. I mean, I think I want to take a look at this list and, um, bring some.
That input's going to be critical, right? I think where you guys feel, what you guys feel is inappropriate. You know how much cash you have left. You know, you have a good sense of in the next two years, the, you know, okay, other items, the non-capital items you want to have money for. I think Nathan's comment is absolutely critical. That only ARPA lets you spend money on a dime without, you know, having to go through the rigmarole of a town meeting. So keeping dry powder, enough dry powder till the, almost the very end is really good. So that leaves you with whatever's left in the bucket and all these things that are competing. And it would be useful to know how you rank order those.
I, I think what it'll come down to is something like the town hall elevator, which is slotted for fiscal twenty five. We say is probably just going to have to be funded through free, it won't be funded through ARPA and we'll just, you know, I think it's taking a look at some of the things we've talked about philosophically and moving some of the fiscal twenty five stuff to fiscal twenty four, if we think that the auditorium lighting is a priority.
Yeah, that's the.
And that, you know, yeah. And so if that's the case, then you say, well, we're not going to do the, we thought about doing the elevator in fiscal twenty five using ARPA. You know what? That's just going to have to be a capital item and that'll go on to the capital items warrant fiscal.
Okay.
Yeah, we do want to keep enough money to do the other stuff.
Yeah.
Important. And also enough money to be able to respond to unexpected. It's, you know, the flexibility of ARPA allows us to do necessary projects quickly. So we don't want to.
But, and my understanding is that basically we have, you know, about a year, maybe a little less.
Fiscal years.
But I mean, we've, we've, we need to spend it. It actually needs to be spent, I mean, out the door, not committed by us, but spent.
June twenty twenty five.
Yeah, June twenty twenty five. So we have, so ideally, um, by the middle of next year, the money's committed and it's being spent.
And I'm concerned about some of the capital projects that we've talked about because the lead, lead times to get the equipment, get the invoice, it could take
Yeah.
Year plus easy. Like look at the library RTU, which is, we still haven't gotten invoiced for, I don't think.
Yeah, but I, I think Ryan and the MFC have a good plan for moving forward on that and making that happen faster. Yeah.
No, but it's, it's not the fault of the product. It's just from, from an ARPA standpoint.
Yes.
The clock can run out.
Exactly, exactly. Um, and the other thing I just want to rev, review quickly is that we're also, um, from the school committee and from the school administration, we're going to get feedback on the lighting requests, but also, um, uh, the priorities, their priorities. Does it shift the priorities they've given us for FY twenty four and pardon?
And the twenty grand.
Yeah, and the twenty that we're asking them to find in their current budget. And then, uh, the police cruiser, to have that be further explained.
An action item.
Yeah, okay. That's great. Um.
Can I, can I ask if it would be helpful, if I could take away all the comparisons, consolidate a draft for FinCom budget with sort of all of this in there that you can carve out. It's not a recommendation, it's just a worst case scenario.
Four or draft five.
Yeah.
Have four consolidated.
So I can, so one thing that we would like to include is the actual COLA and wage changes so that you can see what those numbers look like, but we didn't want to jump the gun on that.
The department, you mean?
Or instead of, like this nebulous seventy nine thousand, it would be
baked into the department.
Baked into the employees.
I think that would be great. Yeah.
Yeah.
Downside is then they'll have a cheat sheet to know.
That's okay.
All right, that'd be a good thing. Yeah. Okay, uh, do we, uh, do we need to review the other warrant items that are on the, uh, that are on the the list that? Yeah, we had the, the list of warrant items, you know, article one through twenty-five. Is there anything here that we need to discuss tonight?
Is there a driving need to close the warrant tonight?
Well.
Is that like a schedule thing?
Well, we put it out there, you know, and we set the warrant last December.
So legally, no, Nathan, it's to prevent what happened tonight, which is, well, we would consider this, but it came too late, and we wish we had more. So you're just trying to set a deadline for, but you can open it and close it again.
Okay.
But then who knows what else will come up?
So, but we would, so we would be kind of on the fly just adding another warrant article?
Right now, we've agreed that we were gonna add a placeholder for the school lighting, the auditorium lighting.
We opened the warrant to take something off?
So you can take anything off, you're just closing it for new stuff?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
You're not recommending yet, you're just saying, this is the list of stuff we can now consider.
That we'll consider, but we're not gonna take anything new.
Okay, and so we can drop things until it's printed, which is what date?
It's in April.
In April, okay.
Yeah. And not all of these are money ones, right?
Do you have what you need for the Cory lighting warrant?
I anticipated a capital equipment large.
Oh, is that what I was gonna?
Will now become the Cory light, auditorium lights.
Gonna ask what article.
Oh, okay, ah, good, I was wondering about that too. All right, aren't you the clever one?
I knew that would happen.
Okay. All right, all right.
Little birdie told you.
It's already in there, okay. All right. Anything else on here that people feel we need to discuss with FinCom? Anything?
Do you have any, this is a stupid question that I know we've all been kind of struggling with, but on the cranberry bog, it's kind of a finger in the wind type of thing, right? Like, we're not.
Let's CPA, yeah, this is a CPA request, article twenty. Yeah, there are article twenty and article twenty-one, one's the cranberry bog and one's the library.
Hundred percent CPA.
Yep, yep. The green old barn demolition is not, right, so that's, yeah, that's the other big money item. Okay. Then I think can we say that we are able to conclude our discussion for tonight?
Great discussion.
And.
You like this, I could tell.
Well, I think it's one of, has been one of our better years at, for the, in terms of process, and I always felt like in, in the past, we were sort of floundering, nobody really knew whose decision that was and how we were gonna drive at anything, it just feels like it's been.
I wanna thank Ryan. Why we have.
Patience as I tried on.
Have the captain driving us, making us make decisions. Thank you, Ryan.
You understand it, please enlighten me.
I, I have, I have spent hours with this poor man.
You're not the only one.
Sick of us all, yeah.
I actually like this stuff.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, I'm wondering though, for the ARPA folks, I don't know if you wanna, you could jump ahead, pull that up to discuss before we do the town hall things, but if the rest of the FinCom wants to adjourn, so you can depart, but you're certainly welcome to stay if you'd like to.
Very good. Could I have a motion to adjourn the FinCom? Give me a second. Roll call, please.
Katia, you are?
Liang.
Liang, I.
Lipinski, I.
R I, Doberg, I.
You are.
We are adjourned.
All right, well, thank you very much. It was a, yeah, it was a very worthwhile meeting, I thought.
You want a quick motion?
On the ARPA?
On the warrant, because that's before on the.
Oh, yeah, 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 thank you, you're right. I didn't mean to hang up, okay.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Okay, ARPA folks, before we do this, Nathan's reminding me, let's have a quick, Nathan will make a motion to close the warrant. The addition, yeah.
I move that the select board vote to close the May eighth, twenty twenty-three annual town meeting warrant consisting of five articles and further vote to authorize town administrator and town council to finalize the warrant for execution by the select board.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. Excuse me, are you taking any public comments?
Hi, Wayne. Yeah, did you wanna, yeah, did you wanna have a discussion, make a comment during the warrant, before we close the warrant?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll, how about we'll, we'll take it now and see if there's, yeah, we'll see what it is. Yeah.
It, it is a, it is a very brief question.
Yeah.
Which is that, and I feel obliged, since the town governance task force went out of existence before its, its recommendations could be taken up. I believe this board made a commitment to at least consider putting their recommendations on the warrant. I don't see any of those recommendations on this warrant. Is that because they weren't considered for inclusion, or there was a, and, or they were considering and was decided not to include anything at, at this time, I, I, I'm not, I'm not advocating that they should or should not be included, but since this was a committee that was especially commissioned by the town meeting, I feel obliged to at least raise the question.
Yeah, I'll respond, others should feel free to add if, if there's more you think we should say. We have talked periodically about some of the proposals in the governor's task force. My own recollection, and, and, and I agree with this, I still agree with this, is that we wanted to look at the, those governance recommendations and consider those for the fall town meeting. And that because they're not financial in nature, and also because I think they need some substantial internal discussions, internal meaning across different boards, some of them, that, that we would, we, we wanna do that in preparation for possibly putting something on a fall town warrant. Anybody else wanna comment?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say that there were a number of recommendations that we really are in line with, some of which we didn't, we're actually doing now without benefit of going to town meeting, because we didn't feel they necessarily required bylaw changes in order to do it, and I would say a nice discussion is an excellent example of one of those things where the process of budgeting is way more in line with what the governance committee was suggesting than anything we've ever done in the past five years that I've been on the select board. And that we, we have already, we have generated a list, I know David has a, a spreadsheet of, we, we made a list of the recommendations, and we've actually, I believe we've actually started asking some staff to work on some of them, but right now, you know, but with the turnover of staff and with new staff, that hasn't gone as quickly as maybe we thought we might get to it, but as soon as the budgeting is finished, I, I would say that we're, you know, soon as town meeting is over, we're gonna start, that the focus is gonna be the next fall, getting those those recommendations discussed and on the warrant if necessary.
Wayne, we, we didn't ask you for input about anything else that we were discussing tonight, but we're gonna do a follow-up meeting about town meeting, correct, a sort of a working group discussion that I know Ryan is setting up.
Right, yes, and, and thank you for that answer to my prior question. As I said, I was not looking for any particular answer, I just thought it was important to ask the question so that you would have the opportunity.
The major thing is, I would like everybody to know, everybody listening, that this report has not been shelved, and it's not being ignored, and there absolutely will be action taken on it.
And has, action has already been taken.
And action that already has been taken, yeah.
Okay, well, that, that, that's great, and then to your question to me, Barney, there's nothing else on the warrant that, that, that caught my eye, that, that I thought I, I needed to bring to your attention, the, we do have the planning meeting coming up next week that Ryan has organized, and that's really just operational things that the board itself doesn't need to deal with, so thank you for your time.
Good, well, thank you. Okay, so our, we've already voted on closing the warrant, we're in good shape there. I have a suggestion, oh, we're gonna do the ARPA, yes, let's do the ARPA recommendations, and then we'll come back to the, the agenda. We're gonna skip over the town hall structural changes for the moment, yeah, would one of the members like to make the motion about the first ARPA vote, and then we can hear a little bit more about it from the ARPA committee? You guys got your?
I. I move that the select board approves sixty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars in ARPA funds to be used to purchase and install a new phone system for town offices and the Carlyle Public Schools.
Second.
All right. Scott or Kate, you wanna, yeah, give us a overview here?
Well, I think Ryan should give us the overview, it's his thoughts.
I think if Jim is still.
Majority of them are for Jim.
Yeah.
You happy to go first or second, Jim?
I am happy to go on you, so that's fine. So we, our phone system has been kind of out of date and unsupported by the manufacturer for a number of years, which makes operation questionable, and the potential for failure is extreme. So for the last couple of years, we've been looking to get a new phone system in place and update the system we have. And it seems like this is the right time to do it, because as I said, the system we have is not supported, it is not functioning, and each time we have a system, either a phone go down or a phone break, it's a significant problem. And I think working with Scott Hefner on our side, did a lot of research, explored a couple of different companies and the possibilities there, working with Ryan on the town side, I think we have a nice proposal that kind of interfaces well with the police and fire, who have already kind of taken a step ahead and gone with the same company. I think we've been vetted by anyone and everybody in town looking at the system, so hopefully the select board will support this and will be able to take action. I think Ryan's looking to do his replacement in the next couple of weeks as soon as possible, and the school, if approved, would make the transition at the start of summer.
Yep, so quickly, this would move us from a on-premises system to a, to a cloud-based VoIP system. I don't have all the tech, technical expertise to say that correctly, so if I didn't, please let me know, but this will be much more user-friendly on the town side, given, you know, we have a, the outsourced IT structure, the ability to to make changes to phone systems, we're evident this week as we were moving some employees around, and Kevin in his bucket, I love Kevin, one of my favorite people, came and was in this closet trying to find which phone line went to which phone line. Here, you would move your phone and plug it into the internet, and that's it, and everything else would be done on, on the cloud side. There does, there is a cost to that, but I do think that the trade-off of having on-call maintenance and something that we don't have to continually track and update is worth, worth the expense. But overall, this is a reduction in operating costs for us, because the the cloud-based VoIP system is much cheaper than current Verizon phone lines, so it's an operational decrease of a couple thousand dollars. The initial cost that you're approving here is so that each person gets the same phone, that it's functional, and that they can have the install happen for, for the phone system. So on the town side, the one-time one-time cost of the phones and the installs around sixteen thousand, and then the rest of it is for the, the schools, as you know, there's many more rooms with teachers, so there's a lot of cost there. But this, to echo what Jim said, this has been heavily vetted, Scott Hefner is, is amazing. We talked with several residents who are, who are interested in our, in our technology upgrades, and we think this is the way to go, and long overdue, and we'd like to just make it happen.
Any questions?
No, I just wanted to make a comment that I just quickly did a search in my email in the IT committee, the first email that I could find about it, which I'm sure it goes back further, was an email about initiatives including a town-wide phone system that stated January twelfth, twenty fourteen.
So this is library, DPW, and town hall, not?
They have those already.
So that would be the upgrade for DPW libraries, town hall.
Somebody has them already.
Lisa and Fire have on-premises already.
So I got two questions. One is, I see in our capital plan that we had forty-five K we spent this year? We didn't spend, it's in your.
And that was a, I believe that was a placeholder and it was put in.
That's an artifact. We didn't, okay, and then the other one is, is this handsets and wiring? All new handsets required?
Yes.
Okay, great.
There's no wiring?
There's no wiring.
Putting new jacks or internet?
No.
If I could jump in, there is some wiring taking place at the schools?
Not at town hall, we're much more efficient.
You are. But it does include the cost of the, the, the wiring that would need to take place.
Okay. All right, so we've got a motion and we have a second, we ready to vote? Looks like it, all right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain, I'm on the ARPA committee, standing from these votes.
Kate is recusing herself as an ARPA member. Okay. Thank you, and that passes, so. All right, Ryan, you got to go ahead.
You make your first call.
Thank you, Scott. For your time.
Good night.
Yeah, you too.
I, I move that we adjourn the ARPA committee.
Right.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned for the ARPA committee. All right, thank you, Scott. Ryan, I have a question for you, do we, are there, I've forgotten, are there motions in here about the town hall structural changes, or is that something we can wait and do at our next meeting?
It's, if you feel like you need to vote on it, then I just wanted to show it to you and make sure that there's no questions or objections before we execute it.
Okay, well, let's, let's see what we can do in half an hour. Let's take a quick look, this is, oh, there it is, four, let's see, where is this, this is.
H twenty nineteen.
So basically.
Pop it up on the screen as well.
The RFP.
Yeah.
The RFP is just for your information, the.
Right, okay.
So what you're looking at here is a picture of a just a glass office, so what we're proposing is, as you walk into town hall, you have the, the glass entryway. On each side, there are two alcoves that are used primarily during, during elections, really, just the, the desk there, they also become de facto storage, because we don't, we don't have some storage. So we're proposing installing, like they have in the library, glass walls that don't go all the way to the top. There's still a gap for heating and for suppression.
Yeah.
Glass so that the light can come through still, but it'll become a individual meeting space, which was the primary objection to the reorganization of town hall, that we were losing Nichols Room, so the Nichols Room is primarily used, except for the occasional night meeting where there's multiple in the, in the town hall for one person doing a Zoom or talking on the phone, or doing something that they can't do because of the way our offices are structured. So the, what would be created is a small room with a, with a table and a little sheet that says how to get on the wifi, and that's it. For people to have individual meetings, we'll put blinds in there, or to, to do a Zoom, or to, for the council on aging human services, or someone like the veteran service officer to meet with people. That's when you would use the blinds, or, or not, depending on the, the nature of the conversation. So it would add two more individual meeting spaces to town hall, the price on it is a little under ten thousand to install the two two glass walls. If, if you're on board with that, and I have talked to everybody, the primary objection was from Peggy. She wanted to make sure that we could still queue folks for the election. We went with this design so that the table could go in front of the door and they could still check people in there. It would still be queuing issues, but the, the trade-off would be not those three days having a functional office. Because we know we're not getting another town hall, I don't know what else to say, so that's kind of the trade-off.
And it still seems to me the check-in could ha-
And it still seems to me the check-in could handle on the other side of the hall where they, we used to have the the um, health check person. Um, I don't see why, under COVID, I don't see why that table couldn't put be put there and the check-in happened there. So there's, I I don't see that this, I don't see that this will have any substantial impact, bad impact. It only has good things, I think, to recommend it.
The doors swing in or out? They'll be on the correct side.
We hope, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. These doors really should have been, these will swing out, that little door.
I want you to show.
Uh, they'll go into the room.
Into the room.
So that they don't block the hallway.
For the two seconds it's open?
Well, you might leave it open quite a bit.
I don't want to do it on the new side, but if I were you, I'd Why? Because there won't be enough room in the space? Because they'll crank the
Close the door. I mean, they'll close the door to use the space.
I know. That's what I'm saying. It's not really impacting the lobby. It's a temporal thing for the lobby. But you're gonna close down. You you should have enough space so you can comfortably have two chairs in it. Well, I would recommend. I don't like, it's like we're getting way too operational, but I'm just telling you.
That's weird. Okay.
All right.
How are you?
All right.
Uh, I don't think, I I think we can just give our
Yeah, we give
We can say, yeah, we approve.
Where's the money coming from?
So we, I was um, lucky enough to get an ARPA grant to do this reorganization. It'll come from there.
We already
It's already approved and being spent.
It also, we've already, you guys have already approved the ARPA thing and this uh, ARPA for the relocation of all the offices, office spaces. And and it's was like
We've already voted on this.
Yeah.
Okay. You're just
Yeah, I'm just
Yeah, just updating.
When you walk in and you see glass, I wanted you to know.
Wonderful. Yep.
Good. All right. And then
Love the updates.
Moving along to the layout. Yeah.
This is what you've seen before, but I'm going to actually
This is the second
Sure it now. So if you go upstairs, you'll see that um, once Sandy moves into finance slot two there, then we'll move Anish upstairs and that frees the first floor for transient desk and also record storage. And then all of the cabinets that you now see by the end of the fiscal year should be gone. It'll be all functional office space. And right now, building has moved into the Nichols Room, which is why we want to move ahead with the additional rooms to make sure we have maximized our space for meetings.
Are we just not seeing the stairwell and stuff?
Yeah.
Yes. Stairwell is
Will there still be a wall? There's a wall going?
There'll still be a wall.
And we saved some money because there's no elevator more, so we don't have to repair it.
I'm not an architect. That's why we're
Yes.
My best, best attempt.
All right. Good.
So that that is um, the changes. I also communicated this with staff. I wanted to make sure they had input. And, you know, like I said, these are eighty percent solutions, so there's not full agreement on the way we should use space, but um, I think everybody wants a change and this seems to be the most agreeable layout to all.
And if I recall, you're, this is providing um, a desk for every single employee, a designated space to work, and in some cases, more some some kind of division that provides a little bit more I don't know if privacy is the right word, but some more
Yeah. As most town halls do, we have a mismatch of furniture from
Yeah.
bygone eras that are too big for the space. So we're gonna create cubes that are appropriate size with the appropriate furniture so that everybody has enough space to do the work. Everyone gets one filing cabinet that they can stuff all their paper into and all the excess filing cabinets will away, which allows us to not only know where our records are, but store them correctly.
And if they do need more private privacy, they can go down now and get use those little private rooms.
Right. Which is a good thing. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the update. Okay, so uh, let's go on to the town administrator's report.
Pull one back up already.
Okay, what's that? Well, the closed town meeting report.
Second floor, or it's
The deck house.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's in his town administrator report, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So in terms of town hall news, talking about what we just talked about. Also, the board's gonna see some new faces. Frank starts tomorrow as the assessing assistant. Sandy with your vote will start in a week and a half. And then um you're gonna see a lot of changes at town hall. So I welcome you to come. I'll walk you around and show you. Some of them are pretty dramatic. And also good. And the DPW has been great. Um, they come every other day to help move whatever cabinets we freed up and some space. Uh, some updates from Aubrey. She worked pretty extensively with the Council on Aging and Human Services Board to discuss the process for selecting. Uh, I can't say replacement for Joan, but the next version of Joan. Um, she's gonna handle the posting administrative details while we get feedback from the board so that the select board gets a strong recommendation from a a good interview group on on who the next director should be. Um, we talked about uh, bringing an appointment to you at your next meeting. Uh, we're recommending Carol, but we'll send you her credentials and other recommendation for your appointment. I'm gonna hold off on the Police Chief Screening Committee so that your chair can tell you about that. I told you Frank, starting tomorrow, we're excited for Frank. He's gonna be the face of that first door when you come into our area. So he's gonna take the brunt of all of the people who want to know where they're going. He's gonna be, he's gonna be our buddy. And then um, talked about Sandy already. Talked about Sean. And lastly, uh, really thank you to Nathan, who spent a tremendous amount of his personal time helping us vet this this uh, HR platform we're looking at, Bamboo. Went through all the documents. I didn't understand any of it. He showed me the liabilities. We brought that to town council, made it extremely efficient. And we believe we have a solution there. So that'll allow us to to do better approval of time off, tracking calendars, accruals, and a lot of the HR functions that we do by hands in many different um, separate ways. This will really make our staff more efficient and more transparent for for your information.
Ryan, I'm gonna ask you to pause there if you don't mind, and I want to go back to the um the COHS um, and the process for hiring a new director. And I just want to ask um about the the recommendation um, is that there'd be one person from the select board participating in that smaller screening group, which will include some um uh, COHS board members and potentially one or two others. I think Aubrey's also gonna be part of that group, right? Uh, I'm interested in serving on that uh, screening committee, but I want to check in with other folks to see if anyone else has a strong desire to do that. And if not, then I would put my name forward to do that. That people comfortable with that? Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
No, I'm I'm I I'm excited to be part of that.
Sorry, Bernie, I went through that a little quick.
No, that's okay.
All right. So Governor Healy released her her budget. Uh, we got a little early as she's, she said that the numbers were really, really modest. So the increase for us is three point two percent, and we were projecting three point four-ish. So um we gained about a thousand dollars in that trade-off, which is, which isn't great. So the three percent in state aid increase could change as this process goes along, but it indicates that um, it's kind of a reset year from the last couple of years where state aid did help us out with some revenue costs. Where that would plug into what we were talking about, you would need to use less free cash if state aid went higher in order to overcome some of these cost challenges. So more to come on that, but um, I would not count on additional revenue from the state this year. At most, you'll see a one percent increase, which is negligible in the discussions we were having. Updates on procurement. Um, we are final with our PFAS treatment system for the library. And for the recreation maintenance bids, both of those came in where where we thought they would. So you'll see those final solutions after it closes tomorrow, but all bids are in. And then the Designer Selection Committee that we discussed is um, gonna bring you a final recommendation for March fourteenth. We're scheduled to meet March sixth. So this will be designers from four different disciplines in order to assist the MFC in their project. So this would look like an on-call service. We want to do the DPW salt shed. Here is an architect to help us design that. We get to design the procurement documents, and then we would procure it and then have it done, monitor it, and then pay for it. Which is um kind of the missing piece of of what the MFC's been doing. Other than that, they did everything that we were, so is this that really design piece we needed to work on? And then Steve and I worked on a sole source procurement for the induct smoke detector for the Library RT unit. So that should move forward. You know, as Scott mentioned, it's taken a long time, so we we want to that continues to move forward. All right. Of particular interest to this board, um, I'm requesting the ability to appoint a working group to assist the Board of Assessors. This comes from the Board of Assessors. They asked for this to evaluate the FY twenty-three valuation process specifically regarding deck houses. So they would like to put together a working group of myself or a delegate from the staff, but it will be me, the chief assessor, a member of the board assessors, and someone from the select board to meet with five deck house owners in town to try and learn some lessons, come up with uh, some common ground and perhaps some recommendations to the select board for for what, and the board of assessors for what we could do to I don't want to say mitigate, but address some of the problems that came from this year.
So you'd like a motion from us uh, to authorize the working group and then a
Authorize me to appoint a working group?
Yeah.
So we move I move the select board authorize Ryan to appoint uh, a working group and uh, that we can, its charge is uh, learning more about Carlyle deck houses and evaluation processes.
Second. Any discussion?
So I have a question. I mean, the deck house issue is a particular issue which has highlighted some potential room for improvement, let's say, in the process. But I'm I'm specifically interested in the process improvement, not limited to deck houses. So is the working, I I would be concerned if the working group focused on the particular anomalies of the deck house if, and specifically if some of those anomalies were anomalies to deck houses versus a total, a good look at the whole process. What I'm hoping for is a working group, I would prefer to see a working group that evaluates the process, looks at what the state statutes require versus what we do. So we need to be in compliance, but you know, usually when you peel back the onion, you find things that are historic and folkloric that may not actually be statutorily required. And I'm concerned that it'll be too focused on the narrow issue. So I would rather see an assessment working group, not a deck house working group. You can have this one, but I really want to see the other one. So I'll approve this one, but I still want the other one, or we can combine it.
I'm ready. Tell me.
I'd rather have a broader agenda.
Well, is is you your sense, I mean, I I had a little back and forth with um, Ken, um, you know, the chair of the Board of Assessors, and my sense was that he was, they wanted to take a holistic look at the not the process. I mean, yes, the deck house brought up some particular things, but that to look generally at how the all aspects of the assessment process and the value, before we get into this next valuation.
I take, I take David's point. I I think this will get the next group. This will give us the information that will say, okay, now what is the next step? And I I do think the select board will get information saying, okay, we need to take a look at the data or
Okay.
um, the the other variables. But this is a response to the, you know, more than fifty people that came both meetings and said, you know, they want something to get looked at. I I think this is a nice, an elegant response to that, to try and get some community input.
Okay. And the um so the five deck house owners, a number of people volunteered, is my understanding. And these are, the these five folks the Board of Assessors just talked with, and they're recommending these five as being interested and helpful to the process
Yes.
of being part of that working group.
This is trying to tie the select board into the discussion.
Yeah, yeah, good. Um, all right. So we have that particular motion on the floor. Any other comments? Questions?
Deborah. Deborah.
Um Yeah, I I think I'm gonna go ahead.
Okay.
Um, yeah. Uh, so let's go ahead and take do our voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This proposal. Okay. And I I wonder if anybody else is interested in um being the select board rep. Are we, I see Nathan volunteering. Yeah, I I I'm
Never stand in the way of a volunteer is my motto.
Well, I I I'm actually also interested in it because I have a, I'm actually in a deck wannabe. I I'm in a post and beam, but it's not, and everybody thinks it's a deck, but it's not, you know, that kind of thing. But um, and I've you know, already looked at some of the data, but um Nathan wants to, and if yes, I I am assuming this is going to be daytime?
Yes.
Will that work on you, Nathan?
We have our
Okay.
We have our hybrid cart.
Say it again?
We have our cart. Nathan will be on the cart.
Okay.
Okay. That's great.
All right. So then the, so um may come as a, we will, where Nathan Brown is volunteering to be the select board representative on this working group. Thank you, Nathan.
I move to appoint Nathan um, Brown as a member.
I do it.
Oh, sorry.
Does it, remember?
We've told them.
You're making a committee.
Yeah, don't do that. Oh, no.
Ah, okay. All right. Well, then we don't need this motion then.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, got it.
I get your point, Nathan.
Yeah, we have to then. That's true.
Okay. So then, yeah, let's move on to the um, the the other items you want to be thinking about.
All right. So the health insurance numbers came in. So the seven point two percent increase in our health insurance costs. So what I did, you can read that that paragraph in the chart that's in the report is is showed the impact on your hypothetical average employee. So you I broke it down from people who make fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, what a three percent COLA was, and what the annual impact of the seven percent changes to show the the actual impact of uh, this year's employee increases. I thought it was a useful exercise just to inform the the wage discussion.
Can I ask you a couple of questions on that? First of all, our plans are only individual and family. There's no like, some plans have couples.
These are all the plans, yeah.
Okay. Then the second question. The change shown, is that the employee share? This is the forty-five percent?
That is the monthly change and then the annual impact.
Of the employee share?
Employee share only.
Not the town share?
Town share is fifty.
Right. So this is the forty-five percent?
Yes.
And if we vote in, it sounds like if we move to the sixty, forty, it'll go down a little, right?
Yeah, it would. Five percent.
Um, yeah. Okay. Well, I mean, it's it points out, it's a good chart. It points out, you know, and we know, I know this certainly how expensive family care is to the individual. And I guess to just reiterate because your points are valid. We really need to stay committed to moving to the sixty, forty at least, right? Didn't Joan say what, eighty-two percent? She cite that figure this morning? Yeah, eighty-two percent town.
New town is
Now they're very rich town.
Western has eighty-two.
That they pay eighty-two. That's a lot. But okay. So anyway, my
Above the the norm.
Yeah, that's above. But but I think the point is, the point is, we need to stay the course on the sixty, forty.
Okay. Ryan? Yeah.
All right. I'm I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on these because they're informational, but the the MCRS is asking for the board to consider a one-time bump in their COLA from three to five percent of the sixteen thousand COLA base. I have included their language exactly and sent the document to you. I have a meeting scheduled with MCRS, so I can better understand this and provide you with a a a paper on it. But that is something that that the board needs to take up or should take up in a upcoming meeting in March.
I had actually a lot of questions on that, and I sent them to you.
I'm gonna take that to my meeting and get your answer.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm also working with, for your last meeting with um, Chief Soros, the members of the Public Safety Facilities Task Force, local design firm, and then I have a meeting scheduled with a resident who's an architect to wrap my understanding of what this um thirty and twenty thousand dollar studies could be, so I can give the board a, this is what it might look like, and this is what could come to decide if if that's still what you want to do or for those designs. So actual costs and and uh, scoping work and outcome. So hopefully have that to you by some point in March. And then
Excuse me, one sec, Ryan, on that one. Um, and I'm, I'm assuming you'll you'll go back and take a look at the ZBA uh, documents that we, not the ZBA, the um
DBA.
Yeah, TBA documents that we have to see if there's any, any useful data or information there that we can, that can help inform this new study.
So the difference is, they're talking about expanding the building envelope
Right.
and changing the parking. So
Yes.
I I do think it would be foolish not to use the information that's there, and hopefully that'll drive down the costs and allow someone to just update a plan rather than build a new one. But I want to hear that from a professional and what that would cost.
Good. I just wanted
Yeah, I just, right. We don't, right. We don't respond real time to people's comments, but that, those are two important points. It's several years old. It's several years old and things have changed. We are also on a sustainability commitment. And then the third thing, most important probably is we have released the, we relaxed the restriction that you stay within the existing footprint. That changes a lot of conditions.
If we do that.
This report.
If we do.
To see if we do that.
If we do that, right. But that's a different set of conditions than TBA was given when they did their study. And I didn't want to say it in response, but I want that point noted. Yeah.
Right. Okay, good. Thank you.
And then, um, there's a lot to this one as well, but the state has, um, before Moore Healy became governor, Governor Healy, she completed an opioid settlement. This is something we have to opt into. So this is Teva, Allergan, CBS, Walgreens and Walmart. This would be, I did some math on it, eighty-eight thousand dollars over the next fifteen years. Um, if you accept it though, we're giving up the ability to sue individually. Most towns are accepting it. Um, we're putting together some recommendations from, from the Resident Services team on Thursday of what we could spend this for. But right now it's essentially this becomes, becomes free cash, but we should be using it to fight the opioid pandemic.
And there's also money from the first round, isn't there, that we've already received?
Yes. So we received twenty-three thousand so far in November from your first uh, settlement decisions, which was Johnson and Johnson, and then I can't remember the second one.
Yeah.
Do we know what we spent that money on?
We haven't spent any.
We haven't spent.
Haven't spent it.
Right. Remember, we had this conversation with Lori Eckler when she came before us around the, um, youth commission.
Yeah.
And nothing's happened with that, but then, well, so we realized that we got that pool.
Yeah. I mean, but you know, if we're looking for a public health nurse and things like that, well, I think that would be a legitimate place to look for funds.
Yeah. And we're gonna, we're gonna try and provide you some recommendations. So these three items are, are kind of meaty. I wanted to give them to you ahead of time so that we're not having a cold discussion. Um, and then we'll work to put them into your calendar, but this will, won't be the first time you see them a, at a meeting. And then some staff recognition, as I like to do, uh, Jen and Anish continue to work on, um, employee morale through employee luncheons. We're, we're combining a little bit with, uh, Joan this week and then, or this month and then just having that monthly gathering that isn't devoted to work, I think is helping departments talk and, and other issues. I really enjoy it. I get to talk to people in a, in a different way, which is good. Thank you to them.
I recommend that the meetings continue until the morale improves.
The meetings. I like it. Um, I know he's not an employee, but, but Ken Mustello has put a tremendous amount of time into these, um, into these valuation issues. Um, I've seen it in real time. Him and Brian were here on a holiday, working together to prepare for that meeting that was the following day. And then obviously I'd like to also recognize Brian for his work during this process. He's currently working through all of the abatements, going to individual houses, and that's his job, but there's three times as many as there normally is. Um, and he was able to continually provide professional information and guidance during that process and, and learn. And is gonna be involved in the discussions that are moving forward. So thank you to Brian. And then the DPW has been going crazy the last week, keeping everybody safe. I just like to keep them in our thoughts as they, um, they work overnight, you know, um, I woke up to recommendations from Jim this morning, knowing full well that he was out waiting for the snow and, and prepping for it. So I, I appreciate, I appreciate Jim and his team. Um, and then I will throw the agenda.
Right.
On the.
Oh, wait. We haven't had, we haven't had the report from the Chair of the research.
Okay, I can wait till the end of liaisons. That's right.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Because I see this appointments and resignations on the, on the next, next meeting. So I thought, wait a minute, is there something I should know?
Yeah. So this draft, um, you'll see that this is a different executive session from what we're gonna do next Tuesday.
Well, I'm proposing Tuesday that we would do what.
Would we do both of these?
Should be a short one, but that doesn't have to happen.
No, that's a good idea. If we can combine them, so we could take this off.
What are we taking off?
Well, we would add the discussion of the, um, the contract.
It's not a secret. This is a fire chief's contract. We have an agreement. We want to bring it to the board.
Yeah, it needs to be.
The time start at seven thirty, that's.
Next Tuesday's executive.
This is, this is the fourteenth of.
Fourteenth would start at seven, right?
Our regular select board meeting. So take off the executive session from.
If we take care of this particular question on Thursday at seven thirty, then we don't have to have a six thirty.
Tuesday at seven thirty.
Sorry, Tuesday at seven thirty, then we don't have to have this executive session at the beginning of the, of the fourteenth meeting.
Okay. Is that cleared to everybody? All right. And so next, right. Next Tuesday is just those two items, seven thirty executive sessions.
This is the bigger one. So the, the the biggest question in this agenda, Madam Chair, just to remind you, is whether or not there is a, and this will come from the liaison report, but a meet and greet with one candidate or a interview, which may or may not happen that night or separate.
That's what I want to talk to you about.
Yeah. So why don't we do that now? Cause that's the meaty part and we'll come back to, so, a quick review of the other.
Yeah. Just a quick update then on the Police Chief Screening Committee. We had thirty-six resumes in, um, submitted. And, um, in our first round, we whittled that down to thirteen, um, two of whom, uh, had then rescinded their, uh, their resumes. And so we went with the, the eleven, which we, uh, have now moved down to six who are doing Zoom interviews on specific questions that we've had. And we're have, it's neat because we have the opportunity to not in real time, but to see those interviews. So that we'll have just some visual as well as, you know, watching how they answer. The thought process when we got into this was that we would move to then the, the Russ Stevens and, and the, the professional group would do these interviews the following Saturday of however many candidates we have. It could be up to five potentially, but, um, and then rank those. But they would do that in a professional setting. You have the ability, a couple of members to review those in person, just as observed. But generally the committee's work was going to be done pretty quickly here by the end of the week, um, to really narrow it down. And I, I was thinking that we would end up giving the select board a recommendation of our ranking of these people. But the question I have for the board though is, are you interested in seeing multiple candidates um, in this process? Or do you want it really culled down? And it's possible that, that we coalesce on one. I don't know that and I won't know that until we finish this next meeting, which is coming up at the end of this week, but, um, or I, I'm going off of what I saw with how it was handled for the TA. Um, where we had, you know, multiple candidates, but in this case you have a professional recommendation and you may have a, you know, a person who comes out as just as one and professionally by this organization. And then, you know, also comes out as one from the screening committee. Do we need to have multiple people before us, before this board to select from? And what is the board really looking for? So.
These guys, when do they do that? All the assess, how many?
This weekend.
Oh, how many? Eleven, seven?
No, no, no. They're, they're, we're, we're doing kind of another process at the end of this week where we're reviewing their Zoom interviews. And in that process, based on everything we've done to date, we may be able to further cull those down. The most they'll be would be five, but we may, we may.
Wherever you're at five, no more than five, go through this assessment.
Correct. But it could be, it could be less. If we, we not, we may knock a couple of them out for whatever reason.
But your question is at the end of that.
At the end of that, what, what is the select board looking for? Um, because the screening committee is, you know, tasked to, to, to screen, but, and ultimately this board decides. But do you want the screening committee to present one? Do you want them to present two? The, you know, ultimately.
In my experience on screening committees is that most times the obvious candidate.
And that's what I think could happen.
The police chief is a little different. That's why I'm asking the, the assessment center question because you're gonna listen to interviews and you're gonna have a feeling about one or more of the candidates. You know, you'll have feelings about the candidates based on observing the interview. But there's this whole other layer of sort of technical competence.
Correct.
Happens after that.
Correct.
Right. So let's say you have a rank order in your mind of five people, and then it's the opposite way in the assessment. How, how do those two pieces of data get?
Well, the, the committee, the screening committee can meet next week and, you know, look at those results, compare them to our own assessment. And say, this is who we recommend and put that candidate forward.
Yeah. So here's my thought on this, which is if, if it's, if it's really clear from both the assessment and the screening committee that there's one standout candidate, um, that you're all agreed on, I would be comfortable just having that one candidate be presented. If, if it's, if that's not the case, and there are, again, I, I just, I'm giving my opinion here. If that's not the case, then I would say put forward at least two candidates that you feel are highly qualified. That'd be my own.
Sorry, I think, um, I, I always, I always like to interview multiple people. I mean, I think if, if we look at what happened with Ryan, I think that worked very well, um, where we had three candidates. I'm not sure if it had just boiled down to one, that we would have ended up with this excellent administrator.
Well, I think, I can speak to the, I can speak to the, being on that screening committee. We did not have a, a, a top, we did not have agreement on a top choice.
Right. So I think.
Yeah. So that's why we ended up putting forward.
So I think that when we, when we put together the charter for this group, I think we actually specified how many we wanted you to bring forward.
I thought we did. That's, I was gonna bring that up.
Yeah.
One to three, no?
Well, I guess I remembered the three part.
So I mean, I guess I, I'm not stuck on three. If, if there's only two, I mean, if there's only one, you know, it'd, it'd be surprising. But I think what we would be assuming is we're not, we're not evaluating the technical or anything, right? That's all been done ahead of time. We're just looking for, you know, the last check on the fit, right?
Right. But isn't, could that be just with one is the question. Be comfortable with they said, this guy was, or this person was, that's a person.
Standout.
Well, I mean, I guess, I, I guess that's a tricky question, right? I mean, cause you, you, you're starting off with eleven and you're boiling it down. It's hard for me to believe that the only one person is gonna be there. But if there is only one person, I don't think I'd say you have to start over again. Um, and so we, you know, I just want to see the one, the one person that everybody really felt was the good candidate, as long as it wasn't a compromised candidate, you know?
Guess from what I'm taking from this, if, if it is, maybe Barney said, but if it's really clear cut that there is one that is standout and that one also receives, you know, top ranking in professionally. I mean, I would think that's a pretty good indication, as long as you trust the committee that we put together as a, you know, broad base of Carlisle. We could probably do that, but I'm not prejudging that because there may not, we may not coalesce. I'm just, the reason I'm asking you tonight about this is because it wasn't clear to me what, what would be work best for this board. And if you, the other thing is, is that you recall, I mean, you've got some people on the committee who are professionals within town and, and have, you know, the police officers or dispatcher and, and, um, any one of these candidates, you know, is essentially could, if, if I would bring multiple and, I don't know. I, I guess I'm not, not thinking. I gotta think through it.
Yeah. My, my preference would be to have up to three, but I don't want to fit a square.
Okay.
Hanging a round hole. If there's only one person, then why put somebody else?
Send us candidates you're not enthusiastic about, just to get.
Okay.
In my. If it's, if it's zero, you gotta go looking. If it's one and that one is clearly above the others, I'm the player. I'm comfortable with the one. If there's two or three and it's a horse race, that's okay. But don't, don't send us anybody that.
Okay.
I'd rather have zero than a subpar one or two.
Use my judgment then. Based on everything I've heard tonight, you just come up with what, you know, if there's, it's obvious or based on everything that we.
And, and listen, we can always, if, if it's only one that you're recommending, that's, you know, really a standout. We can always decide after we interview the person, you know, we can look at some of the other.
Yep, you can.
Candidates.
Okay.
I know, that's off the case, but.
I'm making a face. For those who can't see me.
Yeah.
My, my only comment to that is no one's gonna want to put their name in public on a, on a maybe. So if you go back, if you announce a name and then go back, then people are gonna withdraw. I would.
I mean, so you're, you're.
Once you have finalists.
Basically, you're saying if that the screening committee should put forward whatever candidates they want to seriously to consider the first time around. Yes.
You don't have a second bite at the apple.
I didn't mean to assume, say, you go back to your pool. You went on your pool down to one, zero, one, two. Well, I'm just making the point that if you're not really happy with anybody.
Okay.
Don't put anybody forward.
Yes, yes.
I can't imagine.
You gotta go and look again.
Yeah, I can't imagine. I think we're gonna have.
Okay.
We're gonna be high quality.
Okay. Comfortable with this? Okay. Great. Um, okay. And you said Travis, you're good with this? Okay, great. So let's, just very quickly, looking at this draft agenda then for the fourteenth, not the executive session next week. We're gonna hear from, uh, the, uh, we're gonna hear about the stretch code warrant article under, uh, the warrant article presentations. And it probably makes sense to hear more about, put the lighting, uh, the auditorium lighting under this. Also based on our discussion today. Um, the master plan implementation is something that Jack and Ryan are coming forward with. Is that right?
Uh, and Julie. So this is a placeholder.
Yeah.
You'll also have budget. Budget will be ongoing here.
Right. So we're gonna have to, we'll rework this and put in some budget time. Yes, we had that in here, but I guess we didn't.
Ask the question, just given, given the time, would it make sense for us to, after, at the end of our meeting next week, when more has fleshed out for us to go through this for the following Tuesday?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Or is that not giving you enough time to prepare?
Go through the next agenda?
This agenda.
Yeah, look at this agenda next Tuesday, when you've, when more has been fleshed through.
We'd have to have an open session to do that.
But that's okay. We have to.
You can open it, do the agenda and then go into executive.
Yeah.
Do executive session. Is that all right?
Yeah. I mean, if that works.
Are you gonna be in your car?
We're just talking about it. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And cause we can meet and rework this with the.
Yeah.
Getting budget, time in for the budget. Okay. So we should very quickly though, if we can, we should approve the cemetery deed if someone wants to make that motion. One specific.
I'll do it.
Got it. Come on, okay. Yeah, here it is.
I move that the select board vote to transfer land in the public burial ground at Green Cemetery, described in deed number seven ninety-five as Lot D, section four oh nine, graves one, two and three to, and I'm gonna murder the name. Jin Song Huang and Chiao Dan Huang of one fifty-three Arrowhead Lane, Carlisle, Mass.
You have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This motion carries. And then, um, do, are, are people comfortable with the minutes as they were?
Better be.
By, everybody had a chance to take a look at them on Friday.
I gave comments. I just don't know if they got, how do we know if they got in?
If they went in by, if you.
To approve the select board meeting minutes from January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three and February thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. I mean, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Right. Well, these, this is what we have in our, these are the, the new. Yeah, they're, they're revised.
I'll second that. I can tell you, uh, Travis, I checked my amendments and they're in there. So I, I'm assuming.
That they were in there. So I take it probably.
Okay.
I have missed that.
All right. So we have a motion and do we get a second?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. The minutes have been approved. All right. Uh, that's, that's it.
I move we adjourn.
Right here. We have a second, please, Kate. We're moving to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. The select board meeting is adjourned.